The Chair will call to order tonight's regular meeting of the Board of Education. It's November 16, 2021. Roll call please.
Ms. Hoover?
Here.
Mr. Avia?
Here.
Ms. Stecadi?
Here.
Ms. Redonia?
Here.
Ms. Conover?
Here.
Mr. Marin?
Here.
Ms. Coyle?
Here. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first item on the agenda is closed session. The Chair will entertain a motion to enter a closed session to discuss personnel issues, student discipline, and collective bargaining.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Stecadi?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Room closed.
The board is reconvening after closed session. It's November 16th, 2021. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 26th, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the October 26th, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next item on the agenda is public comment. And we do have some folks here for public comment. Hi, everybody. So I'm just going to read a little bit about the public comment guidelines before we start. Public comment is a time for the community to address the board with comments and questions. Each community member addressing the board has five minutes. Once you have been notified your time is up, please step away from the podium. Public comment will be for 30 minutes with no more than each subject lasting 20 minutes. Please understand this is not an engagement time. The board will consider your comments in its decisions. For those comments or questions requiring a follow-up response, the board president or superintendent will follow up. So the first public comment is Bill Rogala.
We won't be hardcore about it.
I get it right for the second. All right. First of all, thank you. Hello, Bill Rogala. I've been a Westmont resident for about 15 years. Got four kids. Natalie, fifth grade. Jack, third grade. Annie, three. Charlie, one. Thanks, Elaine. Helped me out there. First of all, I just want to mention it's talking through a mask. If I'm projecting or yelling, there's a smile under here. So know that it's coming from a good place and there's no, I respect what the administration, the board, and everyone here and their opinions. So just want to get that out of the way in case I start talking loudly. It's, there's a smile under here, I promise. So I'm going to be arguing against something you haven't yet had presented to you yet. You'll see it later in the task force elementary school item. I sent you the board a letter as well as the administration a letter. That's open to the public. If you guys want to make it public or if anyone wants a copy of it, I'm happy to give it. It's not private communication. Spent significant amount of time, a couple hours, putting that together to try to understand what's going to happen with the changing of either the grade level centers, the two K through five buildings, or if there's going to be a new singular building presented. So I wanted to talk about why any drastic change in policy needs to happen in the first place. For 60-plus years of Miller and Manning as K through five buildings, COVID hit. There's a fog of war. Everyone has sort of done like their best to, like with social distancing and things that we had to do, that they put in a grade level center solution for the purposes of social distancing, is what we were told. Now, when I see the recommendation that will be presented that says, the recommendation is put a brand-new single building for everyone, but in the interim, maintain grade level centers, and then if the singular K through five building is not passed, keep grade level centers perpetually. And my question to the board and to the community is, how have we decided that all of a sudden that the past 60 years is no longer good enough? Or that there were problems there? Or what needs to be fixed? And that's what I want to really talk to, what are the problems that exist for the two K through five buildings? Because the last board meeting that I watched on YouTube, thank you for putting it up there by the way, showed us circling the wagons. We have a blue ribbon high school. We, all those kids that went to the blue ribbon high school came from Miller and Manning as two separate K through five buildings. The data provided by the administration in their presentation, which you'll soon see, shows that Miller is ranked 369 out of 2,038 schools. Manning is ranked 166 out of the 2,038 in Illinois. Both schools total in the top 20% of all schools. If we saw the data that said they're the bottom 50% or there's significant problems, let's talk about what we can do to change that. But based on the own evidence provided by the administration, which you'll see, we're seeing successes. They're ranked as As or Bs, 90%, 80%. And the definition of what problems are going to be solved or what benefits that can be provided through grade level centers isn't evident. Another piece I want to talk about is the task force. You're going to see a lot of slides. Over 25 slides are going to show about a survey. Really want to point this out. That survey has 289 people responded to that. Out of the entirety of Westmont, based on Google, 24,931. So out of 289 responses, you have less than one, about 1% responses. As the board making a decision for the community, I don't know how we can make a community decision if we're only getting feedback from about 1% of that community. We want to benefit the students. It's all about benefiting the students. The administration in the recommendation needs to show a clear link how the students will be benefited. And if they can't draw that distinction or state it clearly- And if they can't draw that distinction or state it clearly, we can't vote to make generational change on it feels right, or it would be nice to do those type of things. The survey was super slanted. And in my letter, I made this point, that the way in which they wrote things, like apples are food that are high, high in sugar content. Foods with a high sugar content are bad for children. Apples are bad for children. Like, on its face, that's absurd, but a lot of the arguments and pieces in the survey really have sort of slanted towards, their entire presentation, over half of it is on this survey, which is slanted, but additionally is less than one percent. So it's just on the sheer numbers alone. If there was a postmaster general in Westmont that decided, hey, we need to make sure that mail delivery in Westmont is equitable to all people getting their mail, as well as we need collaboration of the mail carriers, and if we send a survey out to all of Westmont and they said, yeah, let's, let's make changes to that, that would make sense, but if they all of a sudden decided that, you know what, we're not going to deliver mail on Fridays because we need to spend more time and have everybody come to the main, you know, Westmont Mail Carrier Center on Cass, they would have to, you know, make those changes with the entire community. Because they're going to notice, and I know my five minutes, if you're going to make a change, the entire community is going to know of that change. They don't even know that this is happening. We have less than one percent here of feedback, and it hasn't been made clear and won't be made clear by the administration what problems are solving, what benefits will be provided. And if we're just making the change on what's nice to have based on something that happened through a global pandemic and we're leaning towards that, I believe that would be a poor choice for the future of Westmont. Thank you for my time.
Thanks, Bill. Elaine Rogala?
Hello. So my name is Elaine Rogala. I am a Manning Elementary parent and president of the Manning PTO. Although all of my comments are my own perspective, I do not represent the Manning PTO with these comments. As Bill said, we have four kids, Natalie, ten in fifth grade, Jack, eight in third grade, Penny, three in preschool, and Charlie, who is one. I emailed the Board of Education at the end of February to share my personal feelings about grade level centers. I made a public comment in June after the first elementary task force meeting stating that I was hopeful that the task force would be an opportunity to understand the problem and reminding everyone involved that the status quo is two K through five buildings. Whenever you're looking to make a policy change, you need to prove that change is needed. You need to prove that the status quo is not sufficient. Unfortunately, as a member of the elementary task force, I don't feel that any of our questions were adequately answered. I encourage everyone to go back and read all the materials we've been provided, listen to all of the meeting recordings, and notice how the problem hasn't been defined. As a member of the task force, I also find it to be a misrepresentation to say that the agenda is an elementary task force update, because that implies that the elementary task force was involved in creating the material that was presented today. And while we were asked for some feedback, I feel almost all of the material being presented today was already presented by the administration before the task force began. Albert Einstein famously has said, if I had an hour to solve a problem, I'd spend fifty-five minutes thinking about the problem and five minutes thinking about solutions. And this is what many of us on the elementary task force attempted to do. We asked, what is the problem we're trying to solve? We were told there isn't a problem. So I asked the board, what is the problem we're trying to solve? What is the opportunity we're trying to realize? How will we measure success with specific metrics? And why is it that two K through five buildings cannot continue? If you cannot clearly outline how the new configuration is uniquely and measurably different, then you must vote no to grade level centers. Changing the pre-pandemic status quo of two K through five buildings is a giant decision. And when grade level centers was proposed as a response to COVID, many parents were distrustful, feeling like COVID was being used as an excuse to sneak in grade level centers. And seeing the way that the Quick Reference Guide and the survey was worded, I now join a lot of those parents in feeling like COVID seems to have been used to force a perfectly good system to change without a thorough explanation of why change is needed or what specific benefits will occur. There have been multiple school, school board meetings discussing how to handle the busing and crossing guard challenges present this year. Transportation of students to the schools in the new configuration is a harm that's been significantly demonstrated this year. This configuration also adds an additional transition for students. Academic studies have shown that transitions for students is a harm. Many students find it difficult to start a new school year, and moving into a new building amplifies that anxiety. If the board is going to vote to continue these harms, then we should have a clear understanding of the benefits that are going to be delivered and how we're going to measure those benefits to ensure that they are realized. Many families have expressed personal harm that they've felt as a result of grade level centers. For my family, I'm very concerned about not having my children in the same elementary school. We bought our house knowing that we'd be able to walk our kids to elementary school. When Penny was a newborn, I walked the kids to school with her, and Jack spent a lot of the walk explaining to Penny that when he was in fifth grade, he would walk her to kindergarten. That year, on Jack's first day of kindergarten, Natalie walked into his classroom with us and wished him luck. Natalie was also a second-grade reading buddy to Jack in kindergarten. I look forward to Penny being a second-grade reading buddy to Charlie in kindergarten. I've been told by other parents that I'm selfish for bringing up these harms in opposition of grade level centers. I ask why these harms have to be created if there's no problem with two K through five buildings and no explicit benefit to grade level centers. We've had ample time to provide a solid case for why this change is necessary, and I don't feel like we have one. On February eleventh, two thousand and twenty, the administration provided sixteen attachments on the topic of class sizes. There was no action item related to this discussion, and it was in defense of a decision that the administration was well within their right to make. I think they made a great decision. And we're now asking the district to overturn sixty-plus years of status quo in schools that are rated within the top twenty percent of the state, and I don't feel like we've been provided with any academic research that supports the changes that are being proposed. I work full-time. I have four kids. I'm the president of the PTO. I volunteer with Natalie's Girl Scout troop. I'm taking additional time to research this. I shouldn't be proving that the status quo should remain. I would like the administration to be proving without a doubt that the status quo of two K through five buildings should change. Thank you.
Thanks, Elaine. The next comment is Ryan Horvath, and I'm just going to mention we have about, we have five comments left. We're already at about twelve minutes of our total time on this topic. So if you're, if you're, if you'd like to get everybody's comments in, which we would.
We're good. Let's use some of that time.
Yeah. We'll extend the time tonight because we want to hear from you all, but I just wanted to do the time check.
Let's do it. Mine's shorter than it has been before. I'm here in front of this board a little bit differently this time. I still reside in Westmont, however, my four kids were removed from the district and enrolled in private school. It was an incredibly difficult decision for my family to make, but it was one that was important. As they said, I can't even stress that enough. I've tried to be involved. I applied for a board position. A lot of people don't know that. Some actually have asked me about it, so I'll make it public. I applied, however, my family was out of town, so I couldn't make an in-person meeting. I care about Westmont. That's why we moved here. I enjoy the small schools. I enjoyed what they have. I have four children as well. A second grader, a new kindergartner this year, and two pre-Ks. Seeing them together just melts my heart and makes everything that I wanted true. There was an emotional plea, and somebody on the board actually was tearful for this meeting that I attended. I think I was one of two people there when this decision was made in about, you know, three and a half minutes. And the emotional plea was about teachers who worked together and had the ability to share and collaborate. And you'll see and hear a lot about that collaboration. But you know what the emotional plea is for me? For my children to run into each other in the hallways. Maybe one's having a bad day and they're there for each other. Maybe it's the opposite, and they're having a fantastic day, and that smile and that energy can go with them throughout the rest of their day. Okay? I think it's something that we drastically missed, and the board did not spend enough time on this. Did not. There wasn't one dedicated meeting. If you go back in time to the Sporns Conference Change before some of you were on the board, there were multiple meetings for that one topic. But yet, grade level centers, which is a tremendous decision for this community, did not have one dedicated board meeting for a very long time. Shame on us. We have a great school system here that people came here for. And what are we doing? Multiple car lines, buses that didn't exist, crossing guards that aren't there, families that would spend over an hour of their day in pickup lines that I've observed that are a block and a half, two blocks. Come on. You know, we shouldn't change something that's not broken. So I stand here today with a feeling in my heart that my kids more than likely won't be part of this district because I don't want the change. My second grader was a rough time, but he's adjusted, and he's meeting his friends, and he's involved in activities, and he's there with his sister. And for my family, we have one drop-off and one pickup. But I'm still part of this community, and I deeply care because I believe Westmont's special, and it's different than many areas around us. Smaller, and I think is a direct effect of the amazing schools that we have here. So once again, I'm asking this board to deeply consider looking into this a little further and perhaps getting a better response rate. Avenue of Ease, I believe, was used. I want to go to District one oh-two in La Grange, guys. Go look at their website. Some of their surveys boast ninety-four point six or ninety-seven percent response rate. All we can get is what we got through a sign at the library and some emails that went out to a few and some social media. I think we should and can do a lot better than that. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Larissa Federley?
My name is Larissa Federley. I am not here to talk about grade level centers. I am here to share some great news with you. But first, I've been a Clarendon Hills resident for fifteen years. My husband and I have one child who has attended, attended CUSD two oh-one schools since kindergarten at Manning and who is now a senior member of the Westmont High School Band and Maggots Choir. I am here to share some what I think is really great news after everything that we've been through for the past two years. And that is that after a one-year hiatus due to the pandemic, our Westmont High School Band Boosters will once again host their annual craft show. I know, I'm really excited about that. You may not be as excited as I am, but it's a great thing. And it's, it's thirty-first anniversary. So on behalf of the Band Boosters, I'd really like to extend an invitation to our administration, the school board, our parents, and the residents of our communities to support the band program through this event. Proceeds from, from the booth registration, raffle, and concessions all go to support the needs of the band program, from instrument and marching uniform maintenance, repair and replacement, to scholarships and educational music clinics. The event will feature over one hundred booths exclusively offering handmade items for sale. And if you've been worried about supply chain delays affecting your holiday shopping, I assure you there will be plenty of unique items for you to purchase from our talented artisans. Half of the vendors are new to our show this year, so they're bound, there's bound to be something you haven't seen there before. Our previous craft vendors have told us that they love participating in our event for the volume and flow of customers, the friendly helpers, the great food, and the live music. We've had so much interest this year that we've actually reached our registration goal one month prior to our deadline. We're working to ensure that at the end of the event, they will once again be singing our praises. We began tracking attendance in two thousand and eighteen, and each of the two years prior to the pandemic, we welcomed over one thousand shoppers spread out over the course of the day. We hope we can beat that number this year. The annual craft show is the primary fundraiser for the band program, and we are very dependent upon our volunteers to help the event succeed. As you know, the band experienced a drop in enrollment this year due to class conflicts arising for many of our dedicated band students after the schedule was changed, and this puts us in a unique position, as it in turn means a smaller base of parent volunteers. But also this year, adding to the excitement of the day, our band parents, or excuse me, our band students will also march in the Frosty and Friends Parade later that day at five o'clock. It's important to us to offer the same welcoming environment our vendors and shoppers have enjoyed in the past. This event has been a staple in our community where community members and artists look forward to this event every year. In two thousand and nineteen, I spoke with a craft vendor who had graduated from our district over twenty years prior and had been returning for years to support our show with a booth. We're using our resources, reaching out to the National Honor Society, the junior high school, and local scouts for help, but if anyone would like to donate a gift card to our raffle, support an item for our concession stand, or volunteer that day to help us with cleanup so we can all head to the parade, please email us at whsbandboosters201@gmail.com. Please join us on Saturday, December fourth, from nine AM to three PM at Westmont High School. Masks are required. Admission and parking are free. After you shop with us, please head downtown, to downtown Westmont to patronize the local businesses. Stop by the Westmont Center at Cass Avenue and the Tracks, where you can hear the Westmont High School Maggots Choir sing, and then step outside for the Frosty and Friends Parade, kicking off the Village of Westmont's month-long Holidays Festival. I've left a stack of these cards on the table outside if anybody would like to pick one up with the details to pass around to a friend. But we hope this event can remain a tradition in our community for another thirty years. Our current band parents are very much looking forward to more public performances for our students this coming spring and to welcoming more students to the band program next year. Thank you.
Thanks, Larissa. Lisa Lance?
I didn't take notes, but I will babysit myself with a timer. So I'm Lisa Lance. Hi. I have a kindergartner at Miller Elementary and a third grader at Manning Elementary. I should probably give the disclaimer, Elaine did a really great job on that. I don't often think in that respect. I'm the president of Miller PTO, and thankfully for all of Miller, I never speak for our school or for our PTO because lord knows what I would do if that were the case. So I guess what I have to say tonight might contribute to your grade level centers, like time keep, so I'll try to be brief. But really, I think it's more fundamental around just what you guys do here, you know, every two weeks y'all show up and have these meetings. And so I've been really discouraged in the last couple of years about the way our community has treated one another around grade level centers, or masking, or, or any of these sort of like challenges that we have kind of had thrust upon us in the last two years. And I guess I just want to challenge you guys and probably more so our greater community at large. I think, I echo what people have said, that there's something really special about being a small town and actually having community, right? I think anyone here could probably attest to what actual community looks like in Westmont. That's why we live here. But I get really discouraged when it feels like our fundamental starting point isn't that of trust. I think that I want to believe that that has to do with kind of our yucky political climate of the last six years and the fact that when we were all locked in our homes for a year and a half, we started to mistrust each other because we didn't get to enjoy each other's company. But I just really want to challenge myself and other families and just community members at large of what's our starting point? If our starting point isn't trust in the administrators of our district and the board of our district, we have a lot bigger problems than what building our kids go to school in or what they have on their face or anything like that. Because if our administrators are like maniacal people who like dupe us all with a plan, you know, because they want to take advantage of a pandemic, then we probably don't want our kids in those buildings regardless of if it's Manning, Miller, or South or whatever. So yeah, I really believe that if our fundamental starting place is trust, then we can work through this, these challenges that we're facing, the things that, sure, are frustrations or inconveniences or injuries that we've experienced in the last two years. But if our starting place and our, and our baseline foundation isn't trust, then I don't know how we will overcome the challenges that we have unwittingly been handed, right? So I believe that we can do that. I believe that all of our schools and all of our administrators have really wonderful things to offer us as a community in our town. And if we kind of stack those things and leverage them with one another, really beautiful things will come out of that. I'm really confident about that. But yeah, I'm just, I felt like, in a lot of these meetings, I just, I usually tend to be the person who's like, you're doing awesome! You have a really hard job. And you are. You're doing awesome, and you have a really hard job. But I'm really disappointed, probably more in people that sit on this side of the desk than on that side of the desk. than on that side of the desk. So, thank you for doing a really hard job. And hopefully, um, we can move together through some of these challenges as opposed to divisively. So, thanks for your time, friends.
Thanks.
Under five.
Heather Franklin, you're next.
Thank you. Um, my name is Heather Franklin and I have three children in the district. I have a third grader at Manning, a first grader at Miller, and a preschooler who will be entering kindergarten next year. And I also live directly across the street from Miller Elementary School. And so getting my kids to and from school could not get easier for me um, in that regard. And going into grade level centers, it was, it was a pivot that our, our family had to make. And I think we all did a great job moving um, through that. Um, but there, it was, it was tricky and my kids did it and it's been great. Um, we have really enjoyed grade level centers. And I was really apprehensive at first. And so, um, I will say also this year, I was really looking forward to my third grader being in the Manning Building as a full-time student. And I've been very impressed with the creativity and and of the staff and administration in kind of giving our kids um, just academically more um, than maybe what they could have gotten in the two K through five buildings. I think that being able to gear education to early elementary, that five through eight-year-old is really beneficial for my younger ones. And it makes me really excited that our learning space and just that we can be creative and kind of funding for that early childhood age group. And then moving into um, older elementary, being able to offer them more um, academic endeavors that are more focused on their age group has been a true benefit. And I'll say too, socially, it has been amazing for my third grader. She has come home and I am hearing names I've never heard of. And she is in dual language. And so she is with the same kids through every single um, class. And so we've never really had the opportunity to make many friends outside of the small Miller classrooms. Um, and so that's been an awesome experience for her also. Um, we've loved it. And so I just want to say it's been great for us. I know that um, there's a lot of feelings about just grade level centers in general. I would um, love to see more conversation around transportation to and from the school. Um, but I am confident that that is a problem that has solutions. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, Heather. Um, next is Jeremy Hogan.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I'm not really into public speaking, so if I pass out, call nine one one. You're wasting my time. Um, I, I'm here probably less prepared than a lot of the other people that are speaking on the grade level centers because I'm mostly just absolutely confused. Um, when COVID hit and we were doing this, I didn't understand why. I still don't fully understand how this is better social distancing where we're actually crossing the families to have more interactions. But I was willing to let people give me information. And more time has passed and I feel like we're not getting a lot of the information. Or maybe the information is out there and I don't know where to access it. First thing I heard when this grade level um, level thing was being discussed as going permanent, my first reaction was, how is this possible? And how do people who live right next door feel about this type thing? Because to me, I couldn't justify the home value changes that that would be, especially when you're having to fight the traffic going in and out. But I've been almost hit multiple times trying to go through these car lines and I don't think that that existed before, but I don't know and I can't prove any of this stuff. It's not my job to prove any of this. I'm looking for the information. I'm trying to understand what the decisions are. I haven't made up my mind on this. I just want to know what the facts are. I'm hearing a lot of opinions on good or bad or better opportunities or this can be worked out uh, very positively. But these remind me of Coke too. They said it was better. They said it's great. They said it's improved. But that's an opinion. It's not a factually based thing. And anytime I've tried looking up the policy of grade level centers, the only thing I found is that there's no measurable difference in the grades. But there is added stress in transition every time a student changes schools. And so to me, the only thing I see there is the possibility of added stress. Obviously, my personal stress of my child having to change schools, I can say that that seemed true. She's doing better and loves it though. She loves the bigger playground. So, I'm, I'm not saying that these aren't hurdles that can be overcome, but I want to know the information. I want to understand. When we get information like this is supposed to be better for the teachers because they can transport less, I go, well, how do you justify saying that the teachers don't have to drive five minutes once a week when you're asking the parents, hundreds of them, to drive an extra five minutes two times a day? These are the costs and benefits I don't feel are actually being questioned or answered on all of the effects. And I just don't want us to be going and making decisions without actually looking at all of the evidence and information and avoiding words like better or improved without telling us what's better, to what quantifiable extent is it better? And even more importantly, how are we measuring? Or if this is a mistake, how do we reverse it and is it possible to reverse? The last thing I want us doing is jumping off a bridge and not knowing how we could get back to land. So with that in mind, all I'm asking is for some more information. And if it is out there, if someone could point me in the direction of where that information is, because I really want to know the actual evidence of what's going on unless I would like or it seems good or whatever. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeremy. Are there any other public comments at this time? Okay, Dana Hayjack.
Hi, guys. I'm Dana Hayjack and I just kind of want to share, um, I have a very unique perspective. And I will start off by saying I have been a Westmont resident since I was five years old. That's more than thirty years. Um, I went through the District two oh one school system. I'm a Miller graduate. Um, my brother and my other brother and my other sister are all Manning graduates. So my family did move across Cass when I was little. So we have had experiences with both elementary schools, the junior high, the high school, South School, all of them since we started here. I will tell you, as I was reminded by administrator today, before COVID happened, I was not a fan of grade level centers. I didn't want to think about it. I didn't want to talk about it. I was like, nope, that sounds like work. I don't want to do it. I don't want one kid over there and one kid over there. I don't want to do the drive-in and the totin' and this one's got teacher conferences and now I gotta hustle over there and do these. I didn't want to talk about it. Then when COVID hit and I started hearing teachers and mainly teachers that I trust, I trust a lot, um, say, this is working. This is helping. This is giving me more, which means I can give my kids more. I started hearing that and I said, okay, I trust you. Maybe I should look into this more. Then, in April, an administrator who will not be named convinced me to come in and be a long-term sub at the elementary schools. This is where my perspective completely shifted from no way to, I don't care, just tell me where to drop my kids off and I'll drop them off, to seeing what happens inside of those buildings, both with the staff and the students. And I am up here today telling you, it's working. The grade level centers, and I don't have the math and I don't have the numbers and I am in those buildings. I am telling you, kindergarten goes to a special. All of those kindergarten teachers are in a room and they are all building lesson plans and they are making sure everybody's on the same track. And your class doesn't have more or less than my class. And it is across the community. There is no, Miller's over here doing their thing in kindergarten and Manning's over there doing that. They are all on the same path. The other thing I will tell you is, these kids know each other. They know each other real well. I'm a graduate of Miller Elementary. I knew the same twenty kids for six years. Then I went to the junior high and I had to get to learn to meet sixty-something Manning kids. And I will tell you, and there are people in this room that are Westmont graduates too, I will tell you that is a hard transition to make if we're talking about transitions. To go from a school where you know everybody and everything to having to join over here, that divide of Miller-Manning kid is deep in junior high. Right now, these kids, there's no Manning, there's no Miller because of the great way that grade level centers work. It's, everybody goes to Miller and then everybody goes to Manning. And there's no divide there. And for me, there's no way to measure this. There's no way to prove this unless you're in there and you're seeing it. I'd be interested to see what Amy Quetron over at the junior high has to say with this incoming group of sixth graders who got that short amount of time where they all got to know each other when we were back in person. And now they're over at the junior high. I would be interested to see her opinion on that, of how that looks, how that divide feels. And it, I mean, they only got, what, eight weeks together? So, I'm not, I'm not here to argue one way or the other. I'm just here to like, give a little bit of perspective. My family was directly impacted by this. I have a sixth grader at the junior high. I have a fourth grader at Manning. And I have a first grader at Miller. So this is year two of me going to multiple schools, dropping kids all over the place. So, I get it. I'm not a fan. It's not something that I'm like super stoked to do every morning. But I think that it's something that we can work the kinks out of. There, I, there's still more kinks we gotta work out. But I think it's something we can work the kinks out of. And for me, being inside of the classroom and inside of the schools, the benefit that I'm seeing there, especially for our kids that come into school with a lot more weight than others, carrying weight from home, everything that they're dealing with there. And then they come into school, especially for those kids that are struggling academically. The, the things that they are being provided and being able to be provided for them, they're getting the same thing across, every single kindergartner at Miller knows every single kindergarten teacher. You can't do that when you have two buildings. You can't have that kind of exposure to these kids of different educators, different ways of teaching. Not all teachers teach the same. But you can, you can definitely see it. And I encourage our community, if you want to be a substitute teacher, come on down.
There's the plea for substitute.
And you can definitely come and gain some of that perspective that, I mean, a naysayer got and is here speaking to. Thank you.
Do we have another public comment? We're breaking all the rules, but I want, I want, I want everybody to be heard. Are you guys okay with?
Listen to me.
Yeah. Roxanne Angstrom?
Yes, sorry, Roxanne Angstrom. I was not planning to talk and I had an infusion today, so I'm like shaky. So I'm, I apologize. Um, I, my name is Roxanne. I have four kids in the district. I have um, a child at the high school, a child at the junior high, um, and two children at Manning. I had a child at Miller last year. And I just wanted to say, grade level centers was a huge adjustment for our family as well, having four kids. Um, I really don't have a feeling either way strongly about this. Um, but what I, I guess I wanted to speak on the fact that my main concern is what questions are we asking in making this decision? Um, I hear a lot of the reasons why people don't want grade level centers and I understand them and I have empathy as I'm hearing it because I also know that it's, it, you know, I was like, oh my gosh, I can't even keep track of one, you know, fall curriculum night. I can't even keep track of one meet the teacher night, you know? And now I was gonna have to do it at two schools. But as I've listened to some of the leaders and the teachers at the buildings, I too have been challenged that public education is not just about what's best for my family. Um, so my concern is what questions, like what are we asking? I really want to ask the questions, does this help us have greater teacher collaboration? Um, does, when I saw the, the evidence of the teacher survey that more, my biggest, as a former educator as well, and I sub at the junior high a lot, one of the questions to me was, what do they think about this? What does the staff in our buildings that are now, now more than ever being asked to make wine from no water, what do they think? Um, and when I heard so many teachers say that this was helping them have that collaboration, I also think what is good about that is you have very skilled teachers that have been doing it for a long time, working with new teachers, getting that new blood, but also getting that wisdom. And you can have more of that, um, if that's what's happening. Again, these are questions I'm asking. I also, I guess I just want to say, I think we have bigger issues in this district. I think that to divide ourselves along these lines does not make sense dealing with what we need to be moving forward in as a community. And all the kids in the building are all of our kids. And so for me, the bigger question is, what is more equitable? What will give every kid, not just my kids, every kid a better shot at having the best education in this district? And I know that some of the things that have benefited is that we, and I didn't know this and that's why I'm speaking on it, is that we've had the ability to have like social workers more present. You know, I have a child that needs that, those services. I have children that, and I know children that need those services. And if that allows more of those, that staff to be further, um, uh, you know, have more students have access to those people, sped resources. I'm just asking these questions. What are the community benefits? And I do think we need to take more time to clearly communicate to that. I also, as I teach at the junior high, definitely see the Manning-Miller divide. I came from Chicago. I didn't really understand that when I got here, but I definitely see that divide. And it's troubling for me because I think that we want our kids to be a community, a true community, and we have to do a better job of leading in that. Um, so I, I don't have a strong opinion either way. I don't envy any of y'all's decisions or what you are doing. I just, I love and trust so many of the educators and administrators in this community. And we have, we have bigger issues we gotta solve. We have issues of equity. We have kids that need help. And so I, I want those issues to come to the forefront, not just what is best for me at pickup and drop off. So that's it.
Thanks, Roxanne. All right. Um, are there any other public comments? I think we, we've gotten through them all. Um, thank you, everyone, for your feedback and comments. Um, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Personnel recommendations. John Costle, long-term sub, elementary band. Megan Mraz, long-term sub, social worker, Westmont High School. Alba S. Conejo, custodian floater. Chelsea Wood, secretary. Michael Hatchell, wrestling coach, Westmont Junior High School. Samantha Sarles, fresh, freshman sophomore girls soccer coach at Westmont High School. Keav Banks, game worker and volunteer coach for track and basketball. Jessie Galina, volunteer wrestling coach, Westmont High School. Christian Zubate, wrestling coach, Westmont High School. We also have resignations and a leave of absence. The approval, number two, approval of November twenty twenty-one expenditure report. Number three, ratification of the October twenty twenty-one regular payroll. Number four, approval of Westmont High School pool rental with Academy Bullets. Number five, approval of renewal of dental insurance plan. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Abia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the items for information and discussion. Um, first up is the elementary task force update.
Good evening. And uh, this evening, we're going to share with the board the information that's been gathered as we've been working through this process. And I have with me Tim Wyler, our Miller principal, Lindsay Petersak, Manning principal, and A.D. Norris, our director of teaching, learning, and technology. And uh, first up will be Lindsay to talk a little bit about the why and to kind of give an overview of the process. Um, Tim's gonna be talking about- Tim's gonna be talking about some of the equity issues between Manning and Miller. And then I'll give a summary of the task force. A.D. will provide the board an overview of the survey data that was collected. Then ultimately will provide for the board our, the administration recommendation. And then there'll be opt-in for, for questions for the board, or if there's additional information the board needs before ultimately making a decision. And as a reminder, this is a discussion item this evening. It's not an action item on the agenda. This is purely for discussion tonight. But at this time I'll ask Lindsay to come forward and talk a little bit about the why.
Good evening, everyone. So before we put the statement of why and how we came to that, I think it's really important to discuss how we got to that point. I've had the pleasure, pleasure of working in this district since two thousand thirteen, first at the high school and now at Manning. So, when I came to the elementary level, my trusted colleague, Mr. Wyler and myself, really invested ourselves in, as aligning in elementaries the best that we could. And one of the first things that we tackled during this time is looking at our curriculum across the board. And developing what we call tier one, which means for all kids. What, according to our teachers say are our deficits? What do we need to build up? And how do we do that as a district? We, something else that we also looked at were our grading practices, once again across all elementary students. What does that look like, whether a kid is at Miller, a kid is at Manning, whatever second grade classroom they're in? Do they have that experience? And are they, when we, when they're getting a report of their grades and their progress, does that make sense, no matter what room they're in? So that's a big part of where PLCs really helped us in our Wednesday collaborations, school improvement meetings, and institute day endeavors. Where we're really trying to bring our teachers together in order to find best practice and practice that. And it happens over the course of time. So those were some big things we tackled during this time. And during those conversations, we also look at our programming. Because our programming helps to put these things in place. So it's, it's often something when we talk about programming, student services. It talks about interventions and enrichments that we have, which have changed in this district over the course of time. All the way down to the master schedule. What does a day look like, beginning to end, including specials, lunch, and recess? So during that time, this is where we started to have that conversation of how do we constantly try to, you know, we're, we're six blocks apart, but we wanna have those similar, similar experiences as much as possible. So, twenty thousand nineteen, twenty thousand twenty, I think, is a big year for Manning. Because we had to really look at some impacts that staffing had on us. And I know that the year prior was the first year there was a bubble in Miller as of recent. So they had to add an additional staff member to, to their Miller staff in order to accommodate an extra section is what we call. So during this time is where, in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty is where we started to see some different needs. And in a pre-K through twelve district, we have to look at our staffing as a whole. So, this was where we had a big decision at Manning that we had to look at cutting one of our sections of, of second grade from three to two. We started to see a growing number of needs with our social emotional learning of all students. We had a social worker at the time go between three different buildings, Manning, Miller, and South. And we saw, once again, and, and thinking of that, okay, as staffing changes, you know, we have a bubble here and we have to look at ourselves as a pre-K through twelve district, that we're in this reactive phase. We have to address a need immediately. And how do we do that? Because we, we all work under one umbrella. So this is where we started to really talk about, okay, you know, we've had this strategic plan. We've been trying to really think about the next steps of what does that look like moving forward for the elementary? We had some really big wins with looking at our curriculum coming together. Our teachers really understanding and trying to build that standards-based progress for students rather than looking at achievement alone or, or more traditional grading practices. So we said, you know, let's really look at, as we build the strategic plan, which is over the course of time, not just one year, opportunities where we can build something that's sustainable over time. So, one of the things we started to do as a bigger, under the bigger umbrella of building the district strategic plan is we had, if people, many of you were there, in February of two thousand twenty, we came to the high school and we sat at tables and we, we talked about as parents and as, and as educators and administrators, what are some of the things we want moving forward? A lot of the conversations and topics that we just talked about are basics of any school. Curriculum, support for our students. That's not talking about any big dreams of thinking about maybe some really cool innovative ways to learn. We're talking about making sure our experiences for kids are solid. So, during that, that, that meeting, it was really cool to hear, and also concerning, you know, some of the topics that parents brought up of needs that we need to address. And also starting to think about for the future, what can we, what can we look towards in order to build our strategic plan? February two thousand twenty, we know it happens March thirteenth, two thousand twenty, right? Yes. Okay, so COVID hit. So in that time, I'm gonna pause there. In that time, we had to do a, a solid stop. Because COVID took us to a place of, at the time when we were building it, how are we gonna get these kids in the building at six feet apart? And that's where it kind of comes up, these are not new topics. And grade level centers came up when I was still working at the high school. This is not something that's hidden. It's not something that's any, anyone's part of agenda, there's other districts that do it. But it is a part of something we've talked about for some time and thinking about how do we provide what's best for kids? So, when COVID hits, and Miller does have a different dilemma than Manning does. We have, Manning has a lot of space. We use every nook and cranny right now. But just in thinking of Miller alone, and I know you can speak more to it, but their gym is also their cafeteria for lunch. That's an immediate, different master schedule than what Manning could ever, you know, than what we can do at Manning. We can have lunch and gym happening at the same time. That's a big thing in a master schedule. So in thinking about how do we provide in COVID, six feet apart, which Manning has a lot more space for, and provide a master schedule that's the same for both buildings? You really needed to start thinking in a different way. And so, in that thinking, we come to the conversation of grade level centers. Because we can get all of our kids in the building, having those experiences as a gray bubble in our programming. We can make pivots and moves for those kids. We did end up starting in remote, but we did that as a team. We did that as a team K through five. We didn't have to stress about Manning versus Miller and how do we make sure we're doing the same things? So, we're moving with, with COVID. And I say moving with a lot of energy now, I don't know where that just came from, but, but this is the cool part, is that we found an opportunity of like, okay, education, this is, this is changing things. And I'm all about, I'm all about change and innovation and forward thinking and wanting education to be something, it just is so far behind it. And that's everywhere, that's not just here. It came an opportunity and a re-energizing for us of, we're gonna make this happen. We gotta think forward for our kids. We are invested in our kids, just like this community sitting here. I'm so proud that so many people come and show up day after day to really invest in our kids. And so, we started that planning while still in COVID, to think about, hey, we gotta bring that strategic plan back and keep moving. What is that gonna look like? How are we going to implement that? And how are we going to make our kids more successful despite the obstacles that they face, especially during a pandemic? So, we had that topic while in COVID. And we started bringing back up the strategic plan again. We held some Zoom meetings, we got, and this is where we brought really more than just the elementary in because the strategic plan is a part of the district. We collected data for what the portrait of a graduate looks like in terms of when a student steps out of, of Westmont after their twelfth grade year. What tools and skills and strategies do they have to be successful in whatever they choose to do? And there were some really great conversations around that. Meanwhile, in our Manning and Miller SIP team, which we combined, it's a school leadership team of parents. We really started focusing on the elementary and saying, okay, how do we focus? Yes, this is great as an umbrella for the district, but elementary, that's where we're focused on. So, how do we build a survey or getting input from families about what they value at that elementary level? So, those school improvement meetings centered around, okay, what are those big themes? So, we had themes of, is my time off?
No, that's my.
Okay. I'm at a limit tonight. All right, I'm just kidding. That's okay. So, some of these themes that we talked about, because as educators, sometimes we use the lingo, and I, hopefully I'm not going down the teacher lingo too much. We wanted parents to say, what could they wrap their minds around of understanding? So, some of those, what I'm thinking of, those, those themes were, and our top three are listed here. But we also included clubs and extracurricular activities. We included proximity to your home and flexibility of a schedule if you have more than one child. And then, so we had eleven or twelve of them. Here were our top three. We had over a hundred and seventy responses at the time. We put it out to elementary families, I think, at the time. Am I right up there? And we just asked to rank, what do you value in education? Like, what are your top three? And so these came out, this is what we shared in that February twenty-third meeting of last year. And so from that, is where we really developed the vision, where I feel like, gosh, I always have the focus, but how do we put it into words? And we were asked, you know, we're still gonna do some short-term planning. Let's, if we wanna go into our long-term planning, let's take some more time and, and really think about that. And so for us, that said, let's really define what our why is. Because there are a lot of problems that we face individually, not that we can't fix them and not that we don't have creative solutions, because we always come up with that. But really thinking about, how can we avoid some of those things that come up? And think for sustainability. So, our why is, is captured here of the vision moving forward. We wanna develop an optimal system that's equitable and sustainable. Meeting our students' educational, social, and emotional needs. Providing whatever support is needed for a child to be successful. And to challenge those students who are ready to be challenged. This is lofty, this is a lot. And it's really important to understand, to build a system with all of these things in public education to the, to the caliber that all of us want, is a lot. And so we have to think about, how are we gonna do that in a way that maximizes all the resources that we have? Knowing that we have boundaries and limits and, and budgets. I'll put that in there as well. So what do optimal systems include? Strongly aligned MTSS, that's one of those acronyms. MTSS means that we support kids at the tier one, all kids. Kids that need support in different areas, we support them too. And kids that may, on the opposite end, need enrichment, we also include opportunities for them as well. And we do that in a way that, rather than looking at maybe Manning or Miller, that we do that as all of our students in kindergarten receive this. All of our students in each grade level, we wanna kind of think of those ways, okay? Dual language students are a part of that program, they have their own specific needs, but they're also a part of, of the opportunities that we provide all of our students. And English language learner is another example of programming. So we have some English language learners that are a part of dual. English language learner does not mean that you speak Spanish, okay? It could mean that you speak, that your native language is any other language but English. So thinking about how do we support students in that way? In the ways that help them to be successful in, in the classroom, throughout their course in K through twelve, pre-K through twelve, excuse me. And then intervention and enrichment opportunities is a part of that programming. So something that we've, we've both tried and have implemented in different ways is something called the what I need period. We've just gotten it rolling before COVID had, had hit, which means that we really take all the resources and staffing that we have. And we flood a grade level at a time and break our kids into smaller groups to provide them what they need. So that's where we get that enrichment. That's where we might get some of our extra support. And when you're talking about scheduling that between different buildings, sometimes that can be a challenge. We've found really creative ways to do that, but it doesn't look the same. And that, and, and I think that's something that when we talk about when it's optimal, should it be the same? And are we using our resources that we can provide that best optimal, optimal system? Programming. So one thing we found really clearly is, is building configuration is a big part of it. And I think I'm talking a lot about it because we talk a lot about it because we're, we're in two different buildings. So it's not something we wanna hide from, but embraces a challenge that we do work through a lot of the time. Because at the end of the day, as much as we talk, and maybe he doesn't wanna always talk to me. Because I talk a lot. But we have needs in our building, we have schedules that are different in our building, and staffing that's different. So, at the end of the day, when we start our day at eight, eight fifteen, eight thirty, we have to meet the needs with the staff that we have. And as much as we try to align, we realize that things slowly kind of go this way. And then we gotta bring ourselves back together, but it's an ongoing process in relationship to do that. Curriculum and materials, the resources that we have and making sure that all kids have access to that is a part of that programming. Staffing, everything from the classroom teacher, nurses, social workers, secretaries, assistant of principals. All those things are a part of the resources that we talk about and included in that programming. Professional learning and collaboration. PLCs were a great opportunity for us, and we've done unique things in our building to kind of maximize that beyond just that Wednesday. We've been able to do more since grade level centers. And then scheduling, which I kind of touched on really quickly, is a master schedule is, is a beautiful puzzle that you put together to make sure that you can have teacher collaboration, that you can have students invested in different opportunities throughout the day. And then you gotta work through your building and what is available in terms of the spaces for that learning. So those are a part of the programming that fits into those optimal systems. The biggest thing, and I really feel passionate about the sustainability, is because Manning in the past four years since I've been there has been impacted with having to make reactive changes based on the bigger umbrella of pre-K through twelve. So, just a couple examples of the, of the reactiveness, and I don't wanna say it's bad, because we, we made things work. And we found ways within what we have. Would I say it's best? No, because we lost things in the process, but in the budget and boundaries, you have to think about that. So, in my second year of being in the school, we had three teachers retire. And we knew that was coming, so we kind of planned for it as a district, knowing that I wouldn't be able to necessarily replace what we call full-time teaching, FTE. So being creative, and thinking about as a part of that class size, keeping it, you know, reasonable and not making big adjustments. I moved a math interventionist into a classroom position. Another change that I thought about in saying, okay, class size, all right, that's one thing. But we really have to think, think about some of the systems outside of just classrooms. And looking at the research we do have, that classrooms are, classroom size is not at the top of what has positive student impact in measurable, measurable ways. So I actually had to condense a class of second grade that I talked about to two sections. I realized in that decision, and it was reactive in that moment, I, we had sixty-five parents show up at that meeting to learn a week after I'd made that decision, why that had be, had to be done, and explain it. So, I quickly learned that in that sustainability of things, it's really important to the community when it impacts their kid. So in thinking ahead with the strategic plan, it's really important that we think about how can we build a program that we're not constantly moving the puzzle pieces around in, in order to be successful? So, just a couple of quick examples to show the proactive in thinking about how do we build something that we can manage over time? Versus thinking about each year, how do we kind of move the pieces around to stay within, in the boundaries? Enrollment, it fluctuates. We, we had a bubble at Miller. We've had larger class sizes at both Manning and Miller, depending on the, the history of time. And those things, even though they may not have large impacts that we know of, our, our enrollment has gone up again. So, I don't, I think COVID is something we never predicted, so that'll be interesting to think about. But I don't think enrollment is our number one driver in thinking that this is the why. Our number one driver, or number, or three, are the optimization, the sustainability. And then, I'm gonna pass it on to my partner to talk about the third one, which is those equitable. which is those equitable opportunities for all. Do you need this?
Thank you. Thanks for letting us share this presentation tonight. And Mrs. Engstrom for starting off the talk about equity. I think in my six years in the district, there's always been, you know, a feeling of, kind of like the staff and the students having the junior high, was explained earlier, like, there's a difference between the two buildings. And so there's, and there's a lot, there's differences to celebrate too, like cultural differences and the diversity in the buildings. But when you take a look at the data, some of the things are just kind of tell their own stories. And so a big piece of the equity is that we want to share an experience with the students. And one thing that our teachers are great in both buildings. I mean, I wouldn't take our two buildings over any staff in the state teaching our kids K through five. And they work hard, they get to know the kids. And what I've seen just this year in the system that we've had in place, they get to know the kids at a much better level, someone said earlier. Yes, our kindergarten teachers see every single student. Imagine being on a team and all five coaches know all the players just as well. It just helps with intervention and supports and really problem solving. And so our teachers problem solve every day. And they talk about equity, and they talk about how to build every student up to the student that they're supposed to be. And I think of the student that's going to be graduating from our high schools when they're seniors. And as administrators, I think Lindsay and I, we take a look at, that's the endpoint. So like, a lot of times we talk to people and they're talking about getting to second grade, getting to fifth grade. We have, there's a game plan for our students in mind. And we kind of take a look at that, and that's our vision. And so we kind of have that in mind as we kind of plan for academics and curriculum. And taking a look at a big topic, which is equity, and in this first slide, it just, we only were able to pull from the State Report Card 2017 to last year. That's why we don't have any data earlier than that right now. I'm sure we can roll up our sleeves and dig into the systems that we have in district. But just taking a look at the low-income population at both buildings from 2017 to 2021, it just kind of speaks on the differences of the makeup in the building and what the district is. So that's kind of like a typical, for years of high school, 38% of the students in 2017 were considered low-income in the district, and 53% of that. So we had a higher population of students that had different backgrounds at home than Manning and most of the other districts combined. And then you kind of take a look at last year, where we were combined as grade level centers, and it's a little more balanced out, and it's a little more equitable. And that's kind of the story this chart kind of shows. So the question tonight, and I'm not arguing to or for anything in particular right now when we're talking about equity, but we, status quo, tonight we're talking about status quo and being good enough. And yes, we are good enough, but I think what the high school has demonstrated, what the junior high has demonstrated, and what all the schools, and that we want to be great at everything we do. And I think that's the conversation that we want to kind of focus on tonight as well, as we talk about equity. Part of our dual-language program was to really take a look at our English language learners. And we create a program that's now in the junior high that took a snapshot of how do we, how do we build culturally competent students? How do we provide students that are multilingual at home and bridge that in the schools? And you can see Miller in 2017, most likely because of the dual-language program, we had a higher percentage of English language learners in our building compared to Manning in the district. And last year, again, you can see the difference, because both buildings had EL programs and shared each grade level, we were balanced out to 10% in both buildings, able to provide resources and align those to the staff that works with students in both buildings. Just taking a look at demographics, comparing white students at Miller, Manning, and District, black students, Hispanic students, Asian students, and multiracial families. You can kind of take a look at that in 2015, which we had data on what each building was made up of, especially in the district as well. And kind of just taking a look at how it changed from 2015 to last school year. It's more, the story is that it's more balanced, and students are in a more culturally diverse atmosphere in their elementary education environment. And as they get to the junior high and high school, they're combined, and it's all the students in the same grade. So they're most likely getting the same environment in, at middle school and high school. One of the first, US News, I believe this is the first time they came out with a report on elementary schools. And it was brought up earlier tonight. Both schools are in the top 20%, but you can see there's a difference between the two buildings. This data was taken back from 2018, 19, our state assessment data. Our, if you go to the next, if you actually, if you have this PowerPoint, you can click on the links there. But it kind of shows you what is measured in the two reports. One is that it takes a look at low-income and underserved students, compares those students to low-income and underserved students in the state. It's showing that at Manning, underserved students are performing better than those in the state that are either low-income or underserved. And then it also shows student progress towards their skills and how they're doing compared to those in the state. So that equity rating looks at how well this school is serving disadvantaged students relative to other schools in the state of Illinois. As being in the top 20 is very good. We would want to kind of compare the data for this next year as it would show the report for 1920, because it's always two years in the rear for the reports. So just some things that to highlight, that kind of share information just by looking at the scores and where the schools stand. And just questioning the idea behind equity and the decisions that we make and moving forward as a district with our K-5 systems. And then I am going to turn it over to Mrs. Norris or Mr. Ray.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Tim and Lindsay. And the board was aware that this past summer, we had a task force that was working. And I just wanted to share with the board some of the information that came out of the task force. And we met four times across the summer. It was made up of mainly district families. We did have a couple of community members, some of our administrators, some of our teachers. And then I know a couple of our board members were observers, were not necessarily participants in the discussion, but they were listening in to the conversations. And we, the original charge was actually to come up with, you know, two options for the board to consider. And we really ended up coming up with three options. And the three options were grade-level centers, one K-5 building, and two traditional K-5 buildings. And in one meeting, we brainstormed different solutions for the district. And then, we then went through a process of discussing kind of the strengths and weaknesses of those. And so here's kind of the summary of the strengths and weaknesses of one K-5 building. Again, you have a sense of community and unity. Equitable distribution of resources, because you have one facility that you're sharing the resources. All the students in a grade level are in one school. You have increased collaboration for teachers, and that's not only formal collaboration, but also informal collaboration. So that time before school or lunch or after school, teachers are available. You minimize your academic discrepancies. You would have a dual-language program in one school. And it's an efficient use of staff to accommodate innovative program. The challenge is, the one main challenge is, a new school is approximately $70 million cost. And that's not something the district's budget could take on. And so in that case, you're looking at a referendum, and you're looking for your residents of your school districts to support that initiative. There's also the possibility of adding on to Manning or Miller. The downside there is a loss of green space, and in the case of Manning, it already has a minimal amount of green space for the students. And then again, there would be a significant cost involved in that. Then you have to, you know, some of these are obviously challenges that you could come up with plans for. But, you know, what do we do with students during the construction phase? And then any transportation challenges? And, you know, one of the things that we enjoy is that small school culture, is that you possibly would lose that culture. When you look at two K-5 buildings, the strength is, again, each building has their strong sense of community. And we've heard that there is access to learning materials across grade levels. And so if you do have that first grader who could be challenged more, there are materials in the building to provide that opportunity. Or if you have, you know, a second grader that maybe needs additional support or struggling a little bit, there might be some materials for that student to support their learning. And so that's one of the advantages of the K-5 building. You have older students in the building for role models, and then you would have all the siblings in one school. The challenge is, you know, again, an unhealthy comparison between schools. Decreased collaboration and professional learning, because you have some of your grade-level teachers in one building, and then the other part of that grade level is in another building. And so it becomes a little bit more challenging. You have inconsistent class sizes. You have different opportunities for enrichment and intervention. As Lindsay mentioned, there was, you know, she decided, take a math interventionist and make that a classroom teacher. So that building no longer had a math interventionist, but the other building has a math interventionist. And so you start to see some of those inequities. You would have, dual-language would be only in one school. And it's a little bit more difficult to support innovation, because our budget's limited. And so one of the primary costs we have is personnel. And so sometimes when you're trying to do things innovative, and you're kind of locked into those certain grade levels, it's more difficult to possibly collapse a section in order to add something. And then you have different levels of parent advocacy. And, you know, sometimes we have some parents that are very comfortable. I think Lindsay and Tim are very approachable. But we have, you know, some parents are very comfortable approaching the administration or approaching a teacher. Other parents are not, and it could be because English is their second language. Possibly their school experience wasn't very positive. And so they're less likely to, you know, they're not very happy entering a school. And so when that happens, we know that people advocating for their children is real positive. And sometimes that can also be the impetus for change. Well, if you create, you know, inequities where, you know, that's happening more in one building than another, then that can lead to, again, some different, some changes in programming. And then grade-level centers, you know, the strengths. Again, you have a sense of community and unity within the school. You have equitable distribution of resources, because if all your third graders are in one building, all those third-grade resources are there. Increased collaboration, minimize academic discrepancies. Now we have dual-language in both schools. Efficient use of staff. And then the challenge is, siblings may attend two different schools. You have additional, one additional transition. Limited opportunities for older peer role models. Teacher relationships with the students, and so K1 is two years, so that is relatively short. Lower or high-level materials may not be available within the building. Dual-language is split between two schools. And then limited collaboration between first and second grade. In terms of, one of the questions was, you know, class sizes, and how has that impacted if we're two traditional K-5 buildings or if we're in the grade-level centers? And so this is the current enrollment. And if we were to break it down into attendance centers, so how many kindergartens, kindergarten students currently at Miller would actually attending Manning? This kind of gives you an idea of what the class sizes would be. And so you can see, depending upon the grade level, determines if one building has a slightly smaller class size than another. When we have the students as we're currently configured, then obviously, you know, there is no difference, because, you know, every kindergarten student is in a class of approximately 21 to 22, whereas depending upon what building they were in, they're either in a class of 23 or in a class of 20 or 21. And that's one of the challenges that we've always experienced as a district. I think Lindsay may have alluded to this, that, you know, there was a time where we were really concerned about the enrollment at Manning, and we were trying to be creative. And that's one of the reasons why we made some of the choices we did, which is making South End Early Childhood Center and moving administrative offices out of there so that we could accommodate larger enrollments. Tim was experiencing a bubble in his building, and he doesn't have those same advantages. We were able to add one section. Honestly, if he had a second bubble going through, the possibility would have been to take art out of its dedicated space, making that a dedicated classroom. So now, again, the art experience in one school is going to be different than the art experience in the other building. When you start to put art on a cart and it's going into the classroom versus having a dedicated space, space for art. And so those are some of the things we don't want to be reactive. We want to be proactive when it comes to those things. So that kind of gives you an idea of the work of the task force. And Nadine's going to talk a little bit about the survey results.
So the task force was instrumental in coming up with the survey questions. And the survey questions, we brainstormed questions we wanted to ask. And a lot of it came out of the survey that we had done previous in terms of those optimal systems. So a lot of the survey questions that we asked look familiar in terms of those kinds of learning experiences that we consider to be optimal. And then I'm very grateful, one of our task force members is a quantitative researcher. She makes a living doing that. So she helped me formulate those questions to make sure that we were able to get at the answers that would be useful data. So that's why, that's kind of how this whole thing sort of came to be. So the profile respondents is, yes, we only, we seem like we had a low number, 289 responses for all of the community. We had about, I think it was like 14 couples that both answered. There wasn't a statistically significant difference, so we just left those answers in. And we had about 60-some, or 60-some answers from community members that did not have children. So that kind of breaks it down to let you know sort of what the breakdown is of the respondents. When we look at the responses, I included the respondents that had no children in a couple of the slides. But for the most part, when we talked about the instructional environment, then I let the no-childen respondents get wrapped into the all, and then I showed you what the staff said. So that's what the, just started us off, the feeling of trust and that the administration and the board will make the right, make a good decision for all of the students. So class sizes, the staff is very in tune to class sizes, so their response was a little higher. And once again, we asked folks to, we offered a neutral answer, because not everyone feels strongly one way or the other. So we had respondents that said, yes, I agree, I feel strongly about this, or no, I disagree, or I could go either way, which is where the neutral comes in, which is why the data reflects the way it looks. The classroom assignments, this is something that we really wanted to, this was something that was very important to many of us in terms of the opportunity to take the group of students from a grade level and be able to match those students up with the right mix of social interaction, or specific, you know, maybe a teacher that specializes in that specific need. So the staff, once again, is really kind of understands the importance and was consistent with all of the families in terms of the importance of that aspect of the learning environment. Making staffing decisions and making sure that we have, kids have a broad range of peers. That was brought up by a couple of our families here. That idea of students having many, many different opportunities for friends versus that situation we had where kids went through their elementary experience with the same. where where kids went through their elementary experience with the same 23 students. So we thought that this was pretty, pretty enlightening that every, almost everyone agrees that students would benefit from a broad range of peers and positive interactions. This idea of making staffing decisions for effective, efficient support of enrichment opportunities, we had a great deal of agreement on this. The structures to support interventions, everyone seemed to agree. This was sort of a more neutral aspect of the benefits of students interacting with older students. I think the reason why the staff, I know the staff ended up to be in the, kind of in the middle here is because without a specific and intentional design of students going to classrooms with older students, the way the building configuration worked, fifth grade sort of moved in a different floor as kindergarten and lunch times and recess times were different. So students didn't have the opportunity to interact with with their older or younger siblings the way we sort of pictured. The sustained relationships with principals and teachers, it's funny because the staff is very committed to that idea and they really agree with that. And then the idea of going to school in a diverse peer group is super important to everyone. You know, all of us agree that really to prepare students for the future, it's really beneficial to to have diverse backgrounds and have a peer group that had, that is culturally diverse. The next question, the staff was super committed to this idea because they, they really lived this experience. There's research that was done back in the seventies from a researcher, his name is Bandura. The term that he came up with was called collective efficacy. And it was wrapped into the education world with Hattie, who's a researcher that we all, people in education all know and love. Collective efficacy is when a team of individuals together, they, they align and they work through with their collective efforts to overcome challenges. And that was definitely evident during the pandemic and it continues to be evident that this idea of collective efficacy, which is research based and on the, there is an opportunity to see some of the research on professional collaboration on the task force website. This work that teachers do, it's not just the once a week meetings, although those are very important, we've, we are masters at that. It's the, those before school, common plan times, before you leave. Teacher described it to me as a walking down the hallway conversation and how important that is to the teachers to have their teammates be together, to work together for the benefits of students. And there's research behind that. We could be probably a case study for this because our teachers value their teammates and they value the opportunity to collaborate, to step into a friend's classroom to see how they conduct a lesson. During those win periods where they take the students and they work on, they look at the data to work on how are they going to, how are they going to achieve what's best for those students? And to like literally have teachers, I'm going to take this group, you're going to take this group to make sure that their needs are met and the colleagues that that sort of cross pollinate their talents together. It's really powerful and that's why the staff was so committed to that idea. And it's, once again, it's those informal, you're right next door to me, opportunities to collaborate that are the most powerful and the most meaningful. Communication methods and information about student learning being consistent, because I've seen it, the staff, you know, collaborate about who's going to do the newsletter this this week and, and to make sure that, and I know the two principals are using the same methods right now. So everyone agrees that that is really important to make sure that everyone's getting the same message and the same information. There's two learning, learning environments that have been possible because we have the space and the materials, resources and the staff that we didn't have before. We were able to realign some things and the two principals have done this creative problem solving, this amazing scheduling. The dedicated play-based lab at kindergarten and first grade at Miller, Mr. Wyler brags that he, he asks the students, what's your favorite part of the day? What's your favorite part of the day? Being engaged in that inquiry-based lab where students get a chance to collaborate with with one another and to to build their problem solving skills at five and six years old has been a really valuable experience. And everyone agrees that that experience is important. At Manning, the STEM lab. Mr. Ritz was able to, he was able to create this learning environment that was right up his alley. It's his, seems like it's his dream job. He's doing an amazing job. It is, it is a learning experience that became available because of this, the current configuration. We asked this question because it's part of our strategic plan to ensure that our students have an opportunity for inquiry-based learning. Everyone agrees that this is a really, really important function. Mr. Ritz was a fourth grade teacher at Miller. So this, this growth experience for Mr. Ritz has been as a result of the configuration and everyone's been really positive about this experience. We, the new, kind of a neutral sort of in between, this idea of the least number of changes between the school buildings. There is research about the transitions being, being less than optimal. Most of the research that was done was done quite some time ago when schools were looking at setting up conditions where we had K eight buildings. So folks are sort, we're kind of, are kind of neutral in terms of what this, how powerful this is. And I think the reason why, at least for our, our own staff, is we know that we can build those bridges and to ensure that those transitions between buildings are minimized and that we can help students move between buildings, just like we do bringing the fifth grade to the sixth grade and bringing the eighth graders to the high school. We understand how to help kids transition to those new, to that new building. So kind of a little neutral answer there. The PTOs have been working together. This is a benefit for all of us, the staff agrees. Families with multiple children, this idea of, we wanted to find out, like this idea of like, how important it is for older children to walk or ride the bus to provide comfort and safety. We also wanted to find out if we were able to, because this has been talked about quite a few times, is this idea of the transportation being, being challenging. So we wanted to find out how many parents, how many of our families would take advantage of bus transportation if it was available. So I'm going to give you a, I'm going to give you a slide that, that kind of summarizes this because this is confusing. So one K five building being the best option, families with no children, more agrees, which Once again, we're going to, we might have to ask for a referendum if we, if we change our configuration. So sometimes I look at the disagrees to see how strongly folks feel against an idea that helps sometimes. And then the current configuration, more folks who didn't have children, the district disagreed. If you kind of wrap them, agree and the neutral together and then look at the disagree for the current configuration. And once again, I'm going to give you a slide, I'll kind of display this a little bit better. And then going back to using Manning and Miller as a K five building. Okay, let's take a look at this a little bit differently. So the summary, this is just K five parents. So the disagree for the K, for the two K five buildings. And if you wrap the agree and the neutral together, it's a little bit easier to, to And then because we, we want to honor the time and effort of our community members and hear what they have to say. Now, once again, many families were neutral for all, all three choices. Some respondents disagreed to all of it. A lot of respondents agreed to all of it. A lot of respondents liked two choices. Some respondents said the referendum was good, no matter what the, what the choice was. So just out of, so once again, we asked the question a little bit differently to staff. We said, well, which, which option would you like to see the district go, work toward in the future? A little bit over half, like the current configuration, a significant number like the idea of a one K five building. And so he said, okay, well, what if we took the K five building out of the picture? Which would you pick? And so overwhelmingly the staff agrees that this current configuration is the optimal environment and this is the one that we want. They wanted to see the district work toward. Now I thought maybe you might wonder, if you had to figure out the favorite choice. So remember I said that many respondents said, doesn't matter one way or the other for any of the three choices? Or I agree with all of the three choices, or I disagree with all three choices. So I counted in the community, those respondents that agreed only to one of the choices. So they picked their favorite. So in the community, their favorite was the one K five building. Interesting, right? You would have thought status quo would have been, that would have made a lower number. But the second, their second favorite was the grade level centers. And then their least favorite for the respondents was the two, was going back to what we had before. So I did the same thing for parents that had kids in Manning and Miller. So I took all the, those parents that have to drive across town, I looked at their favorite And that's in the center there. Kind of a split between K five and grade level centers. Going back to two, only four respondents said, going back to two K five buildings would be their favorite choice. And then I, then I, we lumped all the elementary parents together, was 183 respondents agreeing only with a K five building and a referendum, 24 respondents. One of the respondents dropped off and then we asked him about the referendum, agreeing with the current configuration, 38 respondents said that was their favorite and agreeing only with two K five buildings, that was 17 respondents. Okay. Turning it over to Mr. Carey.
Nadine.
Thank you for everybody staying with us. I know we've been presenting for a long time. I promise we're bringing this in for a landing for you. But I just wanted to reference one thing that, about the number of respondents, and I wish Larissa Federley was here, because if you remember, Larissa Federley mentioned that she's a Clarendon Hills resident, but also her daughter attends Westmont High School. And we're a community unit of school district 201 and we're CUSD 201 and not Westmont 201 for two reasons. One is we don't just service the community of Westmont, but we also pick up a little bit of Downers Grove and a little bit of Clarendon Hills. And even though Westmont embraces us as if we're their school district, we don't even service all of Westmont. We only go as far south as, as 55th Street. So actually, there's another elementary district that services Westmont and two high school districts. And so, you know, the, definitely, we would love to have more respondents to the survey, but the 24,000 people that live in Westmont, not all of those people live in our school district. And so, but definitely, we would like to have a, a greater number of respondents. But, so the recommendation after looking at all the survey results and all the work that we've put together, so from the administration, the recommendation would be, you know, to a one K five building would be the, the optimal. But we understand, though, that comes with, you know, a significant cost and a referendum. And so, you know, whether or not our school community, our Board of Education, even our administrative team has the appetite for a referendum. That's one question. But we would also that during that study and that, that planning and so forth, we would recommend staying in our current model of K one, Q five. And then if indeed either there isn't the appetite for pursuing a one K five building or in the event that after you try and you can't secure the yes vote from your community, then we would remain in the K one, Q five model. Our next steps would be to invest efforts into researching one K five building, develop transportation plan for both buildings, build the master schedule that connects both buildings and align programs and build succinct transition plans to help students move from one building to another. And then ultimately, you know, how will we know if we're successful? Student growth and achievement through our iReady assessments in ELAMF, our benchmark assessment, benchmark assessment system, the Illinois Assessment of readiness, the access assessment for our English learners, engagement and then experiential inquiry-based learning opportunities and our standards-based report card analysis. And then also through our stake, student stakeholder, we measure stake, student stakeholder engagement through the Illinois Five Essentials Survey, which is given every year. And so now, if there's any questions from the board?
I would like to go first.
You guys can.
And probably we'll have more questions as it comes up, but I just wanted to point out a few things. We have to vote next month, so the master schedule can be made for next year, on the assumption that social distancing is going away, correct?
We're hoping.
We're hoping.
Social distancing is going.
Is going away, that we're, we're voting on this to go, we have to do it so soon because the master schedule needs to start going into play next year for the following school year. But we're doing this all on the assumption that social distancing is going to go away They're three feet apart because it's, it's allotted three feet apart with the masks. So.
That comes up in our future discussion this evening about metrics, correct?
Correct.
The changes to social distancing.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what if all of this falls apart again? Yeah, so what if all of this falls apart again? Just, just a concern of mine, just because for other people, because this could all just fall apart and happen the same way it did before. They're like, "No, we're gonna maintain social distancing." And we decide, "Hey, go back to the buildings." You can't go back to the buildings.
I guess your, your question is if we see another spike in...
Right, and that they want to continue to maintain, and yes.
COVID-19 and, you know, possibly more stringent mitigations, you know? Definitely, right, I mean, one of the reasons, um, you know, the initial reason was because at the six feet, social distancing, you have at three feet. The two buildings would not have been able to accommodate the students. And so, they would be on an AV schedule. So, um, if we go back to two K5 buildings and, you know, history repeats itself, then, right, you would either be looking at an AV schedule or you would be flipping back to K1, Q5 in order to have all the students attend.
Side topic, not necessarily on the grade level centers right now, with the survey. Say everybody has, there has been discussion pointing out that we need more community input. Say we want to just do this one more year and spend all 2022 getting the community input to engage the final plan for, what is that, 23, 24? Is that a possible option?
I guess any options on the table, that's ultimately, you know, for the board to discuss. But if, if the director from the board was that you'd like for the admin team to spend another year studying the question and trying to seek input from various stakeholders and try to, to get more input from different stakeholders, so that...
Yeah, just, just because I know with the, the task force, it was hard because the time was limited. We don't ha, necessarily have the benefits of running and going to the ground, running and knocking on everyone's door and doing this within a limited amount of time. So, okay, that's just options, that's all I have right now.
Can I just say one thing about this survey, since we're talking about that? I, I appreciate that we did the survey. I appreciate the desire to get input from every single community member. But I think we need to also just be a little bit cautious about a survey on this. It's a survey on what's your, what's your personal preference for grade level centers? And it's not like vote this way or that way on a referendum, per se. And while it's, I think, important to gather those opinions, I don't, it's not a vote on, "Here's what you should do based on how the community feels and their personal preferences." I think what's more important, and I think we're hearing that, is what the people who have dedicated their life's work and education to, what they know will be best for students. I don't have a single question, to be honest. I have an entire page full of comments, and I won't read them all, I promise. I, I will read the one thing that I think, and I hope that people who continue to ask, "Why, why, 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 why?" have heard, which is equity. It is not a small thing, it is the thing. And we have such a wonderful opportunity as a small district, a small size geographically and just size-wise in terms of enrollment, to be able to address equity in education. That is what every single educator is attempting to do, and we can do it. And I think we've seen that, and I think, you know, speaking to the topic of trust, that we need to trust the educators and the administrators who have researched this tirelessly and put this together and who are in front of our students every single day, that they know what's best for them. I mean, for, for me, it's, it is right there, black and white on paper, Manning versus Miller. It is not equitable. It is not right. We're not serving all of the students in this district in an equitable manner. And that is not okay. So, the status quo, in my opinion, of these two separate buildings has to change. Whether it's 1K5 building, which, you know, from a referendum standpoint and knowing how, you know, the socioeconomic background of Westmont, that's not my personal preference. But to keep it as we are right now due to COVID, I think we've seen proven results. And I think we will continue to see that. And that is, forget everything else, equity above all else is the most important thing. So, I'm confused why, why there are questions on why this approach to grade level centers is not the best option. That's all I have to say.
I, I'll make a, oh, go ahead, Carlos.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, I just want to kind of echo Jess, and I'm not trying to pile on. I'm gonna say two things. Well, one's actually a question. You four are aligned on the recommendation, correct? How much collective experience do you have in education, just the four of you?
That's Matt.
Just ramble off everybody's ears.
Five years.
I'm 20.
17.
I think I'm 17, 18.
And that's experience, and then we combine with that your education, which is all focused on education. So, I just wanted to make that point along with the, the overwhelming amount of teachers, teachers, staff that, you know, gave their opinion. And I want to be clear about that, at least what I'm hearing when I hear that staff is looking at a preferred option or feels as though we can do better than the two K5 buildings, which is what I think the staff is saying. They're not saying that's because they don't want to run between two buildings and it's easier for them. Is that correct? I mean, is, is it really that it's easier for staff? Or is it that it's ultimately better for students? Like, help us understand the student-driven reason behind the staff answer.
Everything our teachers do is for students, or else we wouldn't be here. And I have worked in several districts, and I can say over and over again in both buildings, because I've had the pleasure to now work with both, is that our teachers in this district go above and beyond for students day after day after day. And they're probably watching right now because they're that dedicated, and they'll be here the next day.
So, thank you. I mean, I, um, uh, the one other, this is a comment. I just, I'm just building on what you said. If we see this presentation tonight and we say, "We don't want to do anything about two separate K5 buildings," we're essentially saying we're okay with our Black, our Hispanic, our low-income, and our English-language learner students getting not the same quality education as the rest of our student population. And we, I mean, my opinion is, we, that's not an acceptable answer.
Okay, so just a couple of questions. One, the recommendation, it's written in black and white, but I just want to make it clear. The recommendation is for 1K through 5 building. It's not for grade level centers. The recommendation you're making is for 1K through 12, 5 building, is that correct?
That, that's the, the, the number one. But number two is grade level centers. So, again, if, you know, it all depends on, and Jess mentioned, you know, the current socioeconomic times and, you know, how realistic is it to pursue a, you know, referendum? But, you know, the bottom line is having, you know, grade levels together, that's the priority.
Right. So, well, then, I would, if the recommendation is to pursue one, because that's what it says here. It says that the recommendation is for one building. If, if, if we don't think that's a good recommendation, if the administration doesn't think that's a good recommendation, I would, I would like to ask you to change the recommendation to grade level centers, if that's what you think is the right recommendation. Because what, what I believe I'm gonna vote on is pursuing 1K through 5 building, because that's the recommendation that's written in front of me here. And, and then, that means that in the meantime, while we're pursuing that, that goal, we would stay with grade level centers. That's understood in your recommendation. But what is also understood is that the ultimate pursuit is that of 1K through 5 building. So, if the recommendation isn't that, it should get changed. That's, that's number one. Number two, I, I think it's clear as day what the goal of this and the why. It's been made clear, Jess said it, and it's equity. That makes all the sense. I also heard, and, and you have measurable, you have metrics around equity that you've already shown, and you have metrics around what the outcomes that you would like to see are and how you're gonna measure those. That's all clear as day. I heard another why in all of this. And I want to just make sure I'm understanding it correctly. And that has to do with collaboration between staff, I'll just call it staff. Is there a measurable that you can get around that that would, that makes sense?
We can use the, um, we can use the data around student achievement because there is a direct correlation between that efficacy that I mentioned. Hattie, who's kind of our, like, research guy, he says that studies show that collective efficacy makes three times more difference for student achievement than socioeconomic issues, parent, parental engagement issues, or any other factor. So, we would expect to see our student achievement reflect that, that efficacy. Now, obviously, the five essentials, which provides a lot of detail about the work, the working conditions and, and the opportunities for professional learning, that's another metric we can use.
Sorry to interrupt you, Nancy.
No, go ahead.
If I'm understanding you correctly, what, what I'm hearing is that, that in terms of measuring equity and sustainability, you're looking at, at, um, more similarities between the outcomes between the, 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 between all, among all students.
Closing that gap.
And then, in terms of measuring the, the outcome of the increased staff, you're looking for a higher C level, if you will, a higher overall. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And closing that gap between the low-income, the at-risk students to close that, that achievement gap, we would expect.
So, in terms of understanding why you're recommending what you're recommending, I think you've made a good point, made all the points tonight. You've explained why you're doing it. Okay, and in terms of what you expect the outcomes to be, you've been pretty clear about what you expect those outcomes to be and how you're gonna measure them. So, my only comment, my only question, I've already asked Kevin. I would just say, what is the recommendation? What, because I, I'm actually a little confused now. I know it's in black and white in front of me, but now I'm a little confused because, because we're saying that the recommendation is this, but it's not, it's not really feasible. So, if it isn't, let's take it off and have the, the recommendation.
Right, and I think, I think that's, um, again, ultimately, that's, the, the recommendation, you're correct. 1K5 building. Remaining in grade level centers during that, you know, research process. And, um, but ultimately, I mean, it comes down to the board, you know, and your appetite for pursuing a referendum. And if you don't have the appetite for that, then grade level centers. But if you're willing to go through the process to do, you know, for us, well, probably more me than... referendum would be more me doing the legwork. But, uh, you know, that's engaging our, you know, Steve Cashman, our architect, to come up with, you know, 70 million, that's his very, you know, quick, that's what a new building would be. And we haven't asked him the question yet, okay, what about, you know, adding on Miller, adding on Manning? What does that look like? And bringing those options to the board. So, it's, it's, that's what it comes down to. Yes, 1K5 building. But we also want to make it clear that if you as a board don't think this is the right time, don't have the appetite for it, then, you know, the grade level centers.
So, I have a couple referendum-y type questions that might help with that. So, also echo Jess, echo Laura. Absolutely, not even gonna, just chuck those off on my list of comments. But, um, it, it was interesting in the survey that there seemed to be more appetite for a referendum than honestly I expected. I did not expect, um, I expected the disagree number to be much higher from, from all, and especially from community members that do not have children in the school. So, I, and, and then I was thinking through like, right, how the heck does a referendum happen? And realizing I didn't quite necessarily understand. So, um, we school board members are on off-cycle elections, and referendums happen on the same election cycle. Yes, or could they happen every election year?
A referendum can be on the ballot any, well, pretty much anytime. But typically, there are any time that there's an election in your community, whether it's a local election, state election, or national election.
So feasibly, we could ask for a referendum every single year for the next six years? On every, whatever.
I think you can. I don't think there's a limit to how many times you can ask the question.
I would, I would like to know the answer to that. I would also like to see much more community involvement in that yes or no question, which is where this question comes from. So, we service a large chunk of Westmont, and then also a small chunk of Clarendon Hills and a small chunk of Downers Grove.
Right.
And I know that as the survey went out, it was a little bit quick. I would've liked to have seen it go. We had enough time to get it to more people, but we can't change the past. We can change the future. How do we, I would almost like to see in every single year, a postcard go out. Would you support a referendum for this? Yes, no, QR code, website, or check the box and send it back to us? That, like, that type of ease of use. And I know we talked about the potential for sending mail to an entire zip code.
Right.
It had kind of had to be zip code or no. Would the referendum affect all of Westmont's taxes? Or just those that are serviced by 201's taxes?
Just 201.
Okay, so it would only go out to the folks that, that we service?
Right, there, there would be, you know, you have different polling areas, and so there would only be, uh, the referendum question would only be on 201 residents. And, you know, in terms of mailing, typically, the other thing, and I'm sure Larissa will share this. We have, Larissa's also on our PR committee, and we're meeting Thursday night. We'll share this. Typically, when, when a school district does a mailing, it's bulk mail. And that's where, when we used to do, when we used to mail a newsletter, it went to 60559. So, there were, if you live south of 55th Street, you still got our newsletter, even though you probably didn't care what was going on.
I actually get District 86 newsletter, and I'm clearly in 201.
Right. And like, Larissa gets 86 because she's in Clarendon Hills. Well, when you do that, you are not mailing it to the people in Clarendon Hills that attend our district or Downers Grove. So, if you, if you wanted to...
It would just be a singular, like, we'd have to do a mailing list, which is not, which is certainly not as easy, but still very doable.
Well, it's, and there's a higher cost. It's no longer gonna be bulk mail. Now, it's gonna be first-class mail, so there's a higher cost.
So, I think from, from the referendum standpoint, I don't know that there is an appetite for this year, especially with supply chain and, but I do echo, echo what Carlos said about, like, let's, let's clarify what it is, right? Are we saying we stay in grade level centers? And do we as a board adjust our master plan that in the next five years, or three years, or four years, or whatever, we, you know, wait for the time to be, that we reevaluate a referendum for building, 1K through 5 building, which is clearly the best option, but also a much larger endeavor? So, clarifying that piece would be. But answering those questions on like, the, how a referendum happens is helpful to understand that piece of it, for me. So, thank you.
Definitely. Like, part of my question also is how, that's something beyond what we're speaking about today, but something I think this board has to tackle. Is that another task force? In pursuing that and just, you know, figuring?
Right. Well, eventually, I think you'd get there. Where, where it would start probably is, again, conversations with the architect, you know? And then having him just doing some, again, kind of broad numbers, but, you know, a, a K5 building, standalone, brand-new K5 building. And then he can also provide us with a little bit of an idea of what that looks like, you know, in terms of which site would better accommodate it. And then, um, how he would see the timeline going of building a new building, but at the same time, you're educating kids in the old building, and then when you make that transition. And then, um, he can also give us an idea of either an addition on Manning or an addition on Miller to accommodate K five and kind of give us an idea of what that looks like. And so, then that ultimately comes to the board and there's going to be different price tags. And so, you know, then you, then you decide, okay, we're willing to take on this cost versus this other cost. And once you kind of get an idea if indeed that's the direction you want to go and which of those paths you want to take, that's when you kind of, not necessarily a task force, but you would have a referendum committee who would come together and start to develop your referendum campaign. And depending upon the election cycle, you know, determines the number of weeks or months you have in order to. And then there's, you know, for, the formal process for the board is, the board passes a resolution at a board meeting that tells the community that you are seeking a referendum for the, either it would be building of a new school or addition onto an existing school, this dollar amount and what the impact would be to the property taxes.
I also want to echo what you guys are saying and applaud your presentation and being clear. And to me, it was clear, the why. I agree with Jess and all of you guys saying equity. That's my life and my passion, living through that and coming from an underserved area and giving, I think what goes with that is opportunity. Right now, we're not giving all kids the opportunity to excel, and we can. And that's why the status quo is not acceptable. The status quo would not have had me as a physician and a doctor. And so, I think you have to challenge yourself. We have to teach our kids to continue to challenge themselves, that they, you can do better. That, you know, you can take a look at things and say, yes, I'm doing great, but, you know, you can be innovative and, you know, think of new things. They're learning that in the STEM class, you see that. I, I learn it from my kids all the time. We all, parents, I think we all joke about new math. And I was nearly arguing with my child that, yes, you know, even arguing the status quo at that point, like this is the way to do math. It works, why change it? And then actually stopping and watching her do it and being amazed, wow, that is a great way to do, you know, this problem. It's another way and it's great and you just, you learn from that. We can learn from our kids and, you know, continue in that same spirit. And I think, you know, we, you guys answered that question, that we can continue with that spirit to be innovative and learn from each other, social, emotionally, academically, with all those things. And I, again, applaud you guys for presenting that and giving us, you know, speaking of that option.
So, I can't help but mention that the status quo 10 and 11 years ago in this town was that Westmont was one of the worst places to go to school.
Oh, yeah.
I cannot help but mention that right now. Our high school was one of the worst in the state. And 10 years later, we are in the top of the state and that was the status quo. We challenged that status quo and changed it for the better for everybody in this community. And it was hard and it is still hard. But I can't, like, that was the status quo a decade ago, that we were the worst. And we're not. And I have to say, these two schools not being grade level centers is the outlier. South School is a grade level center. Westmont Junior High is a grade level center. And Westmont High School is a grade level center. And they are all awarded and doing amazing work. Amazing, like, I just, so it's, yeah. Like, the equity brings it home and, and this is a, this is a language in our community. Grade level centers is, is words in our community because it's come up at least twice in the last 10 years. I went back in board docs, I saw it, I think in 2013, and I saw it in 2018. It's only a word in the community because this is now the third time that it's come up in a reactionary way to take care of something that has happened. And if we think that going back to K through five buildings, when we have an equity in our buildings and we know that we're going to do equity audits coming up, if we think that it's not going to be right back on our table next year and the year after, it's, this is going to continue to be on our table because it's not equitable. Period. It's time that we just, we, we gotta move past that. Change is hard. People inherently don't like change. Scientific, ask Mr. Ritz, I'm sure he can give us all of the reasons why. And STEM and play-based are two of the benefits that will go away if we go back to, and those things are helping the youngest in our community who don't have words for what they're feeling for these very, very strange years. They don't have words for that, but it gives them these outlets that just lightens them up. So, I thank you guys for all the work and I thank you for all of the recommendations. And I just wanted to, I couldn't, couldn't stay quiet, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but just to remember that, that we have changed the status quo in this town before and we are all better for it. And it's hard. It's hard. But it's worth it. Thank you.
I agree with others, you know, the data looks like it points to grade level centers, you know, the, but I do have one question. When you've sent surveys out in the past to the community, what kind of response rate do you get, do we get?
I'm trying to think when, like, it's easy to school families, those are the easier audiences. It's always a challenge for non-school families, you know?
I believe we set a goal at the task force, we were trying to get 10% of the 201 community, you know, adults that, they can fill it out.
But I'm trying to think past surveys.
I don't remember a community survey, survey all the years that I've been.
I'm trying to think.
It's been a long time since there was a full community survey.
I know the last referendum, the PTO
would be the last one.
Went around and did canvassing on their own
Right.
For that referendum. But you see where that turned out.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd have to check, Kevin.
So, I have one, one last question, I don't know if anybody else does, but I, before we get into the December meeting and we vote, I feel like we need to understand a little bit about cost.
Okay.
Not that we should make this decision based on cost, but we should understand what we're getting into one way or another. So, we've been doing grade level centers for, is this the second year?
Second year.
I know it's been anomaly years and so I'm not sure how much of a baseline it gives us in terms of whether we should expect, like, if the decision is for a K five building and we do grade levels and level centers in the interim, or for grade level centers directionally, or if we go back to K five, what, what, what are the costs that we're looking at as a district? I feel like as the board, we should understand that at least directionally, that we should expect costs to overall go down or overall go up and what are we looking at that way? Just so we can factor that in.
Yeah, I can put that together.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything else that they feel like they want to see before we?
Not see, but one last thing for my personal. When you brought up the experience, I'm sure you've talked to your peers. What do John, Amy, and Jack, and Kevin and all them think about this? Have they given any opinion towards your guys and your change? Picture.
Mr. Jonak was, he attended the first two or three meetings of the task forces as the junior high was possibly a location for, you know, readjusting where the kids go to school. Very supportive of, you know, the conversations on the task force. Personally, I don't know.
We're a very collaborative team, very collaborative unit. And so, a lot, you know, we learn from each other. And so, in terms of the benefits and the strengths of having teams work together, Jeff Baldeman is paramount. I mean, there's, so we are a very, like cohesive team, so we'll continue.
That's what I figured, but I didn't want to assume.
You wanted to hear that aloud, didn't you?
I, I do have one more comment, just before, since we're voting on this at the next meeting, just regarding the one K through five building. And I guess I'm still a little bit unclear, like Carlos was earlier about, like, if that's what we're voting on. And I, I guess I would just encourage us to tread lightly with any talk of a referendum because I feel like what we've talked about here is how Westmont is and kind of continues to be this anomaly kind of school district in the best way possible. And I think we have a perfectly great solution to close that achievement gap that, that preserves the cost of living in Westmont, which is such an attractive feature of, of living in Westmont. And if we can preserve that and address the equity issue, any change process, you've got to give it five years before you can see what the results are. So, I say we stick with that for five years, gather the trend data, and then maybe see if, if that, that one building is still something we even need. If we don't need it and we don't have to raise property taxes, then we continue to be this district that just compared to other districts is doing the things that we're not supposed to be able to do. It's supposed to be the more, the higher the property taxes, the better the schools. And I think that we might be able to prove that theory wrong with the grade level centers. And so, I would just ask us to tread lightly with discussion of a referendum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Makes sense, thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, the next item of the, on the agenda is the presentation of monthly financial statements.
Good evening. So, we have the October financial statements for your review tonight. During the month, the district received $392,000 from the state. There are $30,000 of fiscal year '21 payments that we still have not received. And then $140,000 of fiscal year '22 payments voucherd but not released. We did receive another installment of the 2021 tax, the 2020, sorry, tax levy in the amount of $237,000. Total property taxes collected to date are $24.9 million, which is a 98.38% collection rate. So, the last two years' collections rates were 97.7 and 97.18. So, again, our tax collections are a little bit higher than the prior two years. And in the ed fund, revenues are slightly higher than the prior averages. Again, a result of the property tax receipts over the past two years. And we received some FY '21 and some FY '22 payments. And $120,000 of that was evidence-based funding. And then we do have some fiscal year '21 and '22 payments that are voucherd but have not been released. Revenues in the O and M fund vary over the past few years and again are above the prior year averages. Again, mainly a result of property tax receipts. And then in the transportation fund, again, they vary significantly from year to year. They're above the prior year averages. We did receive $103,000 of fiscal year '22 payments from the state this month and there are no additional payments voucherd at this time. As far as expenditures go, in the ed and TORT funds, they're comparable to the prior year averages without contingencies and slightly higher with contingencies. And again, this is a result of some of the salary increases not yet paid for FY '22 and as well as a large amount of SRR grant funding that can skew that. In the O and M fund, we are 23.68% spent to date with contingencies and last year at this time, 21.81%. And then the transportation fund, the, it's difficult to compare for year to year because of COVID and not having transportation and then, you know, doing amendments and things like that. So, it, there's really no way to make comparisons from year to year, but we are on target and have received bills timely. The investments are attached for your review. We have $25.5 million invested right now. Again, you'll start to see that go down as we continue through the year until our next property tax cycle comes into play. And then the fund balances are attached as well. I do want to bring to everyone's attention, our insurance fund shows a fund balance of $355,000 as of the end of October. What it does not reflect is the October insurance bill of $305,000 that was not pay, not paid as of the end of October. But we did pay the two dental premiums for November were paid by the end of October. So, again, that fund balance is very low at this point in time and I want people to be aware of that. And then the activity fund balances are attached as well. Does anybody have questions?
On that insurance fund balance, what happens if our next bill is larger than we have in the fund?
Then the district will have to make payments. We, we, we have to pay the insurance, we're self-insured and we do have to make payments. And so, if there is not enough money in the insurance fund, then that money will have to come out of the ed fund and potentially the O and M fund since we have employees in both groups to make up that shortfall.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Kim? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the tentative 2021 tax levy.
All right, it'll be just a second while I get it ready. Okay, good evening. I am pleased to present the 2021 levy recommendations. This is the last levy that I will be presenting for the district. And we will start by, is this notch? Hold on. All right. I don't know why we're having some difficulties here. Okay, I'm sorry. First of all, we are going to start the levy process by projecting revenue and expenditures. Then we estimate EAV and new value. We look at York and Downers Grove Townships assessors. Then we look at the revenue, we review the budget implications by fund. We present the preliminary levy to the board. And then we publish the truth in taxation notice if necessary. And then we present a levy, a levy hearing. And then the certificate of levy has to be filed by the last Tuesday in December. So, first, we're going to look at our levy recommendations by fund. In the ed fund, we are recommending an $18 million levy and special ed, 3.6 million. TORT, 130,000. O and M, 3 million. Transportation, 1.2 million. I R F, 400,000, and social security, 475,000. So, total in the operating funds of $26.8 million. And then our debt services for our two outstanding working cash bond issues, so $1.35 million for a total levy of $21.1 million. So, the first thing we look at is our property tax extension limitation law called PT. So the first thing we look at is our property tax extension limitation law called PTAL. And that says that we can levy 105% of the prior year's levy or the preceding year's CPI, which was, is 1.4% for the 2021 levy. So our 2021 levy, tentative levy represents a 10.9% overall increase over last year's extension and 11.51% in the capped funds. It protects the district from unforeseen changes in EAV and new growth. We ask more than we anticipate we're going to receive because all of the information we have right now are estimates, an estimate of the EAV, an estimate of the new growth. And so this again allows us to collect the money that we're entitled to and be a cer, be certain that we're going to receive the money that we are entitled to.
And Kim, if I could ask a clarifying question, we normally ask for much more than we received the previous year, knowing that we're like not necessarily going, so like every year it looks like we're asking for 10 to 12%, but we actually receive closer to like 1.5, 2%.
Correct, yeah. So we're anticipating our actual increase of 2% overall and 2.1 in the capped funds. And I have a slide in here with a representation of what that looks like.
It just looks like a big number every year, knowing that we're not going to get it all. Okay, thank you.
So, and then this is that slide that shows those differences. So the blue bars are what we ask for in our levy and the red bars are what we have received in the past. And then for 2021, it shows what we're going to ask and then what we anticipate we're going to receive. So you can see the blue bars are much larger than the actual red bars. And then this is the tax rate history from 2010 through 2021, what we're anticipating. And so again, the blue bars on here are our debt service and you can see that's a relatively stable amount since 2010. And then the red bars, which are operating rates, fluctuate from year to year. So you can see our tax rates were low in 2010. That's when our EAVs were high. And then we had a period of declining EAV which caused tax rates to go up. So you can see the peak in 2014 and then they have gradually come down since then because EAV started to go back up. And so we're anticipating a 4.4657 tax rate overall and 4.23 in the operating funds. And then the other thing that we like to do is how do we compare to our neighboring districts? So we do a comparison of our unit districts and then also we ha, also have in the area, high school and elementary. So we look at those combined. So the combination of districts is there for you to review. And you can see in terms of unit districts, only Elmhurst has a lower overall tax rate than CSD 201. And then when you look at the high school and elementary districts combined, both Hinsdale 86 and the marker combo and the, you know, the Downers Grove, Darian combo and the Hinsdale 86 and Anne Darian combo, they all have higher tax rates than we do. So the next step in this process is the truth in taxation. And so we have a notice of proposed tax increase that will be posted in the Liberty Suburban Chicago newspaper on Thursday, December 2nd. And then we will have the public hearing for our levy at the Westmont Village Hall. And that will be at our next board meeting, Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, at 7 o'clock PM. And that is everything for the levy. Does, anybody have questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the update on the 2021-22 school year.
As I've been doing with all of our board meetings, giving the board and our community an update on how things are going for us this school year. And again, because we never know if this is the first time somebody is, is looking at the presentation, I always like to share our guiding principles and that is number one, is maintain the health and safety of our students and staff. And then of course, this year, we're really prioritizing full-time in-person learning and trying to avoid pivoting as we were doing last year. And we're also making sure that we have meaningful and engaging academic experience. We address the social emotional needs of all of our students. We provide consistency, stability for all of our students and staff and provide continuous professional learning for our staff. In terms of metrics, we are seeing in the state, an uptick in COVID and also in our county as well. We continue to be at a high level of transmission. I believe, I think two or three meetings ago, I thought I, we'd be going to a, to a high level and obviously that hasn't happened. And our new cases per 100,000 is 148, which is why we're at the substantial level. And for DuPage County, the positivity rate is 2.89%. As of last Friday, when you take a look at the seven day positivity, Westmont is at 2.48% and 102 new cases per 100,000. Downers Grove is 2.69, at 140. Clarendon Hills is 5.08 and 184. Hinsdale is 3.59, 125 new cases. Then average for our local community is 3.46%, 137 new cases. And then again, that's trending upward, whereas before we were, in our area, we were less than 3%. In terms of our experience with COVID, in terms of our certified staff, we've had three staff members test positive for COVID and we've had five total and then we've had nine. This is since our October 12th. And then our student data, again, COVID symptoms, students have to be tested before they can return to school. And you can see what our numbers like, Southway at 5, Manning 103, Miller 40, the junior high 62, and the high school 30. And I'm tested positive for COVID. We've had four Manning students, one Miller student, one junior high, 10 high school students. Some of that revolved around our fall play, that there were some close contacts and positive tests. And you can see where we're at from year to date. So again, just like what's happening in DuPage County and what's happening in the state, we're seeing more positive cases. And just a reminder of the transmission levels, again, we're at a high level of transmission. It's not our positivity rate, but it's the number of new cases per 100,000. And then when we hit 50 to 99, that's when we'd be at substantial and then 10 to 49 would be considered moderate. Just a reminder to our community that we, the last Friday, the governor reauthorized all of his executive orders and so we're still operating under mask mandate for schools, physical distancing of three feet and masks are required on public transportation. And contact tracing is less than three feet when students are masked. And again, just a reminder, you know, if you defy the executive orders, there are consequences for school districts, including loss of funding, loss of accreditation, and then our athletic teams would not be eligible for state-level competition. And just a reminder for our parents that again, students who have COVID symptoms need to stay home and have a negative PCR test, close contacts, it's less than three feet for 15 minutes in a 24-hour period. So that's cumulative over the school day and non-masks is less than six feet for 15 minutes in a 24-hour period. Unvaccinated person who tests positive needs quarantine for 14 days and unvaccinated, close contact, quarantined for 10 to 14 days, can be reduced to 10 days from last contact if they have a negative PCR test and released from the Page County Health Department. And then vaccinated persons who test positive for COVID-19 need to quarantine for 10 days from symptoms or positive test. And vaccinated, close contacts, need to have a negative test, but they don't need to quarantine or they're not, they're not excluded from school. In terms of testing, again, currently, I'm hoping that the Page County Health Department may support test to stay, but currently they don't test, they don't support it. We have an agreement with North Shore Labs and so right now, our school families can opt in and have their child or our staff members tested on a weekly basis. It's a rapid antigen PCR test that they're doing. Instead of the nasal swab, it's done along the gum line and the cheek. So it's a little bit easier for younger students. And again, this is voluntary basis. The test is covered by the family's insurance or there are, the, North Shore does have grant money that they can cover the cost of the test. If a family decides not to sign the consent form, but then later on, they can always opt in or if their child's in close contact, they can also at that time give consent for their child to be tested. So they don't have to necessarily commit to the weekly testing. Right now, we're at about 51 students who have opted in and so we're hoping to, to increase that. And the week after Thanksgiving, we should be able to start all of those weekly tests. So we're hoping to build up that number. The other thing that if the Page County Health Department does decide that yes, they can, they're comfortable with test to stay, we're positioned then to have that program in place because we'd be able to administer those tests when needed.
Kevin, can I ask, so for the cost, so is this covered or not? Is it covered by the grant or?
It's, it's, if the, it's covered by the family's insurance. If the family does have insurance, that's who the grant will cover. So that, there, there isn't a reason why a child would not be able to be, to be tested.
Is it happening at the schools?
It'll be happening at the, at the schools.
Okay. And would it be like every Monday at Miller and every Tuesday at Manning, kind of that situation?
Right. That's what, though, North Shore develops the schedule.
Okay. So it's their people?
Right. It's their people.
Okay.
So they send the technician and they set up the schedule and then we'll let our school families know which day of the week will be their building. And they collect the samples and then they also notify the district and the families of positive tests.
Okay. And it happens within the school day? It's not like, it's expected to have, it's not like, get your kids from, home from school at 3 o'clock and they need to come back at like 4:30 or something?
Right. It's in, during the school day.
And then, oh, I just lost it. What, how does that affect symptoms during school?
The, the student can be tested before they go home. They'll still have to go home until we get the test results back.
But that North Shore person would have to be at that school or would they like?
For that, in that instance, it would be the school nurse that would administer the, the test.
Okay, cool.
But they would, they would still send a technician to pick up the test. We don't have to transport it.
Thank you.
And then my last slide is, we are trying to, now that our elementary students are eligible for the vaccine, we are trying to host a vaccine clinic. We've reached out to OSCO. They've been working with some school districts, the Illinois Department of Public Health. We haven't heard back from them. We've filled out the request for both and we're hoping to hear something and then we'd be able to set up a, a clinic, not only for our own students, but we allow the community as well to receive the vaccine. Because again, you know, students who are vaccinated, then a whole piece of close contact is no longer a concern. So that would really be helpful and beneficial.
Kevin, can you speak to the, another, which can be confusing, their variations on the time, a time period for testing and returning to school? Our, our recommendation is coming from DuPage County.
Correct, correct. When you look at, you know, the, you know, it is a little bit confusing, right? Because you have CDC who puts out guidelines, then the Illinois Department of Public Health puts out guidelines, but both will say that the local health department ultimately determines the, the decision-making tree that you implement. And so like, for instance, it is possible to only be excluded seven days and return to school, but that's not something that's in DuPage County Health Department's decision-making tree. So ours is 10 or 14.
And we've been using their recommendations?
Yeah.
Pretty much, from the start.
Yes, we have.
And is that test to stay? When you say test to stay, is that the seven, that's not a seven day?
No, that, that would be for a, a close contact without symptoms. I, I think it's days 1, 3, 5, 7.
I'm getting all my times confused.
And as long as they keep testing negative, they can stay in school. They have a positive test, you know, but right now, Page County Health Department will not recognize that.
Which is why Page County Health Department doesn't, doesn't back it right now.
Kevin, I just have a comment. Could we possibly put the decision tree on the page, the district page?
Sure.
Where it, you know, says tell me about, just slap it on underneath there?
Yeah, we can put it on there.
First of all, thanks yet again. I love this presentation and I, it's so helpful to follow and see it evolve and, and understand really what's, what's going on and what's coming down the pipe. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Would it be possible on the, on the page that I'm looking at right now, which I think is the second, it's the third slide in your deck. It's, and it's consistent from, from week to week, the information that's presented on there. Would it, that, that one right there?
Okay.
Would it be possible to put for the positivity rate and the new cases, just a table or a graph underneath that shows the evolution?
Sure.
Could you add that?
Yeah.
I find myself looking at this when I, when I do get this presentation and going, going back, are we going up, are we going down?
Yeah, I could do that. So that you have the history of it.
You can see it, you can see it clear as day because, because I wasn't, until you said it, I wasn't aware that this, these numbers were up because we had been going down.
Yeah, we've been trending down. We were getting right to like 102.
Yep.
And then it's started to spike. And I think, I think right now, it might be a little bit of Halloween. Kids getting together and...
We're within that two weeks from Halloween.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, and then now we've got the Thanksgiving holiday coming up and...
Yeah. This isn't any different than what we saw last year.
No.
No, it's just slightly less.
It's less, but the trends are the same.
Yeah, the trends are exactly the same.
Anyway, so if you could put that, that, that history on there and maybe just always keep it at, I don't know, five weeks, 10, whatever fits on the page nicely, you know, just some history.
Yeah, I can do that.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions for Kevin? On this presentation, I assume you're leading the next section, Kevin, on mask metrics as well?
I have a presentation.
Okay.
Just a board memo. But, you know, we, we've had this conversation a little bit and so, again, you know, prior, prior to what we've been seeing recently, it looked like we were trending in the right direction. But I do think with the elementary students being eligible for the vaccine, I can still see a time when the governor would lift his mask mandate. And so in terms of, you know, as a district, when do we consider making masks optional? The CDC, the IDPH and the Page, DuPage County Health Department, they are all on the, in agreement that in terms of masks being worn indoors during substantial or high level of transmission. So again, we're still at the substantial. So the, the earliest I would recommend is if our county would get to the moderate level of transmission, then we would be considering optional masks. The other possible metric the board might want to consider is percent vaccination. And we're going to start collecting the vaccine cards from our school families, just based upon our experience when we do have close contacts and, you know, 10 students are named as close contact, we're trending about 50% at the high school and junior high, you know, of those, those students who'd be close contacts. And so then we'll have to see, you know, get a definitive number, but also see where elementary students are at. Hurt immunity is considered 70%. And I
And, um, I did reach out to Page County Health Department. They really won't sign off on, on a percent, you know, um, for a school. But again, herd, herd immunity is 70%, so that's one metric we could consider if we got to. Our staff's over 90%. Because I think we start off with about 30 that were not vaccinated at the beginning of the year, where, you know, we keep dropping that number. So, uh, we're definitely over 90% of our staff is vaccinated. So it'd be more, um, what percent of our students are vaccinated. But the other thing to, to consider is that the three feet, social distancing, that's based on wearing masks. If you're not wearing masks, then we go back to the six feet. Um, unless, again, if we were to reach a point where the transmission level is so low, masks become optional, possibly, you know, the health department would say, we can also be unmasked at three feet. You know, I don't see them going less than three feet. But, um, at six feet, you know, we start to have same, some of the same challenges we had last year in terms of how do we fit students into a classroom at six feet? And so, um, the elementary schools would probably, um, look at their master schedules and may have to make some changes in their master schedules, um, in order to accommodate it. And then, um, the junior high and the high school would have to look at, um, the enrollment in each of their classes each period to determine that. Um, the high school last year, if, I don't know if you recall this, but, um, there were times that, um, you know, there was kind of like an overflow room, uh, for when the numbers got too high where we couldn't maintain, you know, six feet of social distancing. So that's something else that, you know, we'd need to consider as what that impact would be on the school day, um, at six feet, and how easy would it be to manage?
So I'm going to jump in real fast here, um, just before we dig into a really long conver, and I swear it's not because it's almost 10 o'clock that I'm saying this, but I feel like Carlos said something at a previous meeting that really resonated with me, which was that, like, we shouldn't be talking through all of this right now, like what ifs and that, because if the governor lifts the order, there, he's going to be getting guidance from somewhere else, and all of these other, you know, departments of health are going to be providing guidance for us, including like, is the three feet thing going to change? And at what, you know, percentage of vaccination? And so I think we just, this is good to have, um, to consider maybe, but we're also not even in a position right now where that, that max mask mandate is going to be lifted anytime soon, so I'm just not sure how heavily we need to dig into it right now. But please, if I'm wrong about that, or if anybody wants to flush this out a little right now.
Touch base point, just a good touch base point.
I think it's important that we continue to touch base on it, because we do need to be ready to make a decision when and if the governor does make a decision. So I think it's important to keep touching base on it. The only question I have for this is the, is the new piece of testing, and how that could potentially, because we see that, we see that in, in, you know, the rest of the world, you've got get vaccinated or get weekly testing. Now, weekly testing is an option for our kids.
Right.
So just how? And that's a question for the DuPage Health Department, for, for, for you to bring back to them. How does the weekly testing fit into all, all of these things?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Now that it's becoming more regular? Between S.H.I.E.L.D. and North Shore Labs and all these other ones, yeah?
I totally agree, and again, like, that conversation with the, with the health department, you know, and let them provide us with some guidance rather than us trying to figure it out.
Exactly. We've, we've made our decision to stick to that even before the governor made his mandate, so.
Um, and then, I think, you mentioned getting more numbers for vac, vaccinations, and even before the, you're able to get the clinic, like, are people, elementary parents providing any records of vaccination yet?
Uh, not yet, and we're going to be, um, contacting families that they'll be able to upload into Skyward. So that it'll be kept in Skyward, and that way it'll be very easy to search a database to determine.
Great, yeah, because I, I know, um, like, a lot of just pharmacies or private practices are offering it if people aren't able, if they're waiting on a clinic. There are some other options.
And I know, I've been sharing, Downers Grove is having a clinic that's open, you know, to, um, our community as well. I checked with, with them, and so it's open to us as well.
Great.
So.
That was happening at the end of November, if I remember correctly?
I thought...
21st?
21st, yeah.
So it's coming up.
Any other questions or comments for Kevin? Okay, let's move on to the school calendar.
Okay, so, um, this is actually on the, for action, uh, later in the meeting, but, um, the calendar committee always looks at, uh, the, a potential school calendar, and this is for the '22, '23 school year, so we're already starting to plan for that. And so they, um, always provide two options. Uh, calendar A, um, would start one year earlier, and so the first, um, day for staff would be August.
One day.
One day, I'm sorry.
They all knew what you meant.
So, uh, August 15th would be the first institute day, and the first day of student attendance would be August 17th. Winter break would start a little bit earlier, and it would, um, start on the 22nd of December. November 8th, because it's an election, that would be a, a holiday for all, all schools, because they use some of the schools as polling places, they use our junior high. Institute day number three is the day after the winter break. It includes both Good Friday and Easter Sunday, uh, the Monday after Easter off. And then, um, the last day of student attendance would be May 26th, and that's if there were no emergency days. Uh, calendar B, it starts one day later, and so it would start on the, uh, 16th, and this first day of student attendance would be the 18th. The, uh, third institute would be on November 7th, and again, November 8th would be the election holiday. Winter break, uh, starts and ends later, so we'd be in school through the 23rd. So, uh, winter break would start on the 26th, and then we would return to school on the 9th of January. And it only includes, um, Good Friday, the Monday after Easter would be an attendance day, and the last day of school would also be May 26th. And the committee, which is made up of, uh, teachers, non-certified staff as well, and they do poll their members, um, the calendar committee prefers option A.
Any questions for Kevin on the calendar?
Is it the same number of total school days in both of them?
Uh, they're both the same.
Both the same.
It's, off the top of my head, it's, um, I think it's 180, but then there's four institute days, um, parent teacher conferences, so they both end up being about 176 student attendance days when it's all.
The only thing that I see really on calendar A is that piece of, we really only have, we come back on a Friday?
Right.
From winter break, where it's kind of like...
That's a little odd.
Ugh, come back on a Friday?
Yeah.
To that, off of a, to a, two-week break, to come back for one day, like, how valuable is that, is that day versus coming back on the 9th?
Right.
That's, that's really the only thing I see on, on calendar A that's kind of like, eh.
He, he said you turn on a, oh, five.
Because there's a Teachers Institute Day on Thursday.
Yeah, but it might be a nice way, everybody comes back, hey, we're back, and then...
I feel like that's the deal before you go on break, is like, woo-hoo, we're going on winter break.
Any other comments or questions for Kevin on the calendar? Okay. Emergency days is the next item on the agenda.
So we had this conversation in an earlier board meeting, and it was asked, you know, I was asked to look into a couple of things, and then, um, the board wanted to, to consider it again. So again, um, there was a, a law passed that allows school districts to have e-learning days in lieu of the traditional, um, emergency day, so the snow day typically. And, um, there are some caveats that, uh, the students have to be provided five hours of work, you have to make accommodations for students with IEPs and 504 plans. And, uh, there is a process where we would have to have a public hearing, um, before the board could take action out of, on it. But some of the questions revolved around if, um, the district went down this path and did approve e-learning days, are we then obligated to take e-learning days? And we would not be, you know? You could have that as an option, but you could still take emergency days, or you could take one e-learning day, and then, you know, the next four days, if you have inclement weather, need to be, um, traditional emergency days. So you're not committed to using the learning days, you're still limited to five, either e-learning days or, um, emergency days in your calendar, but, uh, you're not obligated to use the learning days.
How is that call made? Who makes the call?
Uh, it's usually my call, you know, based upon, um, you know, weather forecasts, talk to other superintendents, and then depending upon, you know, the direction, direction the board gives me, if the board is, if the board would like to have, you know, the first time be an e-learning day, and then get feedback, you know, on how it went, and, um, you know, whether or not it was, um, you know, a, a good option to have before the next day to occur, or if the board wants to say, well, you know, only two days a school year can be e-learning. The other days, if there were more than two, would be traditional emergency days, um, then that would, you know, obviously be part of my decision-making.
I, I'm looking at my notes actually, and that's exactly what we talked about, was the idea of limiting it and saying, let's not do five. Let's say, let's say, is it possible this year to just say the max is two, three? I, we didn't say a number, we just said less than five.
Yeah, and I, I just think like, um, some kind of pilot type of idea, just, only, for a couple of reasons, because we are a unit school district, um, a lot of high schools are adopting this model, but since we're working with the, the little kiddos, I think that we need to just be a little, like, you know, see how it goes. Um, and we're not officially a one-to-one district yet, are we? And a lot of the schools that adopt this are one-to-one.
Right, we, you know, last year, we were a one-to-one district, obviously, in, in the prior year. Um, we're no longer a one-to-one district at the younger grades, in part because, um, some devices end of useful life, and so we're, we don't have the, the inventory to provide every student with a, a device at this time.
So I just think those are two things to consider, um, which is why I'm more in favor of piloting it, trying it out for a day or two.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm, I'm similar. I have, I have questions about what it looks like at the younger grades. I don't know that this makes sense for, for a K through 12 district, for the same reasons. At, at junior high and high school level, this makes all the sense in the world, especially at the high school level. But I struggle to see it at the younger grades, and I especially struggle to see it, um, for the pivot, for the families on a very quick, on a very quick dime, or, uh, yeah, I struggle to see that. So on, on a pilot situation, is see how it, see how it works, and go into it very intentionally, looking for some feedback from our families and seeking out that feedback in a very, um, obstinate way to get it. To make sure that it works at all of our grade levels, because I'm, I'm just not sure that it works K through 12.
So Kevin, do you need, um, just our general consensus to say yes, we're okay with piloting this?
Right.
You don't need a formal vote?
No, I don't need a formal vote, just, yeah, consensus, yes, and then, um, I'll start that process then, like, as I mentioned, we, we'll have to have a public hearing, we'll have to post that we're having a public hearing, have a public hearing, uh, before the board can take action on it. So I'll start following through on those steps.
So we're all generally nodding our heads, right? If anybody has any...
How many days are you thinking for the pilot?
You know, I would, I would suggest one, and, you know, um, hopefully we don't have back-to-back days, right? So, so hopefully there's a little bit of time so that we can have the one, we can get feedback from our parents, feedback from our staff, um, let, you know, allow the board to see, kind of get a flavor for what types of things were done at various grade levels, so you can take a look at that, discuss that, and see if, if, yeah, we're comfortable having another one this year, or, you know, I think we need to maintain our emergency days.
I, I, the only time I would have is that, because if we're going to approach it from a pilot standpoint, which is what I think we all agree is the right way to do it, and, and designing it as a pilot, making sure that we think about what that communication looks like, and, and if, if we don't feel that we have enough time between now and, I don't know, end of February, I think would be reasonable, um, to do it, to get that put together that way, then maybe, maybe it's not this year, maybe it's next year. I just, because I think it's really important that if you're going to do it as a pilot, then, then you design it as such.
Right.
Any other comments or questions? Do we all, does anybody have any opposition to us giving Kevin the green light to go ahead and pursue this?
No.
On a pilot basis? All right, the next item on the agenda is the 2021 Illinois Association of School Boards' conversation.
Yay. Hope everybody got to glance at this. I did sit in on a presentation from IESB that spoke to each position. When looking at this, um, I don't know if you guys got that page, it said the board's recommendations. Everything's pretty, I feel like we would all agree on from 17 down. Um, it's just a renewing of things in that position, they're just reinstating things. Uh, the amended belief statement is just talking about adding the words physical and mental overall health of the students. I feel like we're all okay on all of that. Um, the committee, the Resolutions Committee suggested, and I don't know if you guys, when you guys glanced at this, if you look at the bottom paragraph, it gives you their suggestion on whether they recommend or don't recommend. How does everybody feel about that? Is there anything?
I mean, I disagreed with a couple of their recommendations.
Okay.
Of course, I don't have my paper with me.
You say, of course, what?
Before Saturday.
She didn't bring her paper, I mean...
I definitely thought about it, but I don't know where it's at in my house. But I read them all.
Well, I think, um, I mean, I'd become, does anybody else have anything they want to comment on? I didn't have, see anything extremely controversial, Ange, so, I mean, Leah, if you have a couple you want to give Ange to give back on?
Yeah, no, and I didn't think, I didn't think anything was particularly controversial either. It was just some general disagreements with the committee's stance on it.
Yeah, there's the things, like, the committee is against the, where is it? Now I'm like looking around. Well, of course, the child safe gun storage, like, of course, because they don't want the guns in the schools. But, um, with reading, the science of reading curriculum, they were against that one because it needs to change the whole, you'd have to look at the whole curriculum in each school separately on that one, so that is why they oppose that. I could see that being an issue, that maybe we want to go against the grain. The health and sex education curriculum, they want to put it in the hands of the districts. That is the whole point of that vote, as opposed to it coming from a bigger area, that the district itself would decide on what that curriculum is. I could see that being a little hot-button topic, um, but they want to, their position was to pass it. But yeah, other than that, like, hot-button token words cannabis sales, they just want to give us money from that, so that's what they want to vote for on that. But other than that, everything, like I said, seemed pretty okay.
Yeah, I think the only other one I disagreed with was the compensation one. They're saying...
That we shouldn't compensate the board, but there's a whole nother resolution that says we should compensate for childcare.
Yeah, so.
So anybody have opinions on all that, or are you guys okay with the resolutions?
I trust your judgment.
Board came with?
Seriously, like, I think that's part of this, is we just have to say, are we willing to, like, um, you know, you're, you're representing our board, and I didn't see anything controversial in there, and so from my, my standpoint is, um, you know, if you, if there's a consensus around a few of the items that we want to push against, that's fine, otherwise, I think...
Okay, like I said, those are, I see what those would be, the hot-button topics, just because it's the words?
Yeah.
because it's the words and that, but I don't see anything wrong with them in general, once you look into it. It's not just a statement of a resolution, so, but yeah. All right, okay, I was like, you sure? You sure, Leah?
I think so.
Okay, all right, cool, you guys, I, I got this then, I'll be voting Saturday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number nine, this is the medical insurance renewal, and Kim, I just, I know you wrote a, a great memo recapping this, and I, have we all read Kim's memo, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so if you could just give us real high-level overview, and then we can discuss.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring the board back up to date. We discussed this at the October 26 meeting, because we had a presentation from our broker about our insurance renewal at a 6.033% rate. The day after that, I received a September 21, 2021 invoice, which was unusually large. So I took several steps to investigate this, contacting the broker to see why this was happening. You have a copy of the history of our premium collection versus our invoices, which has been sent to, is sent to all of our insurance committee members, which are comprised of individuals from our three unions. And so my concern was, we had another very large month where our invoice expense outpaced our premiums by $52,000. So to date, you know, at that point, it was like $208,000 negative, I think we're about, and I'm sorry, my iPad is not working, but about $244,000 or so thousand dollars to the, in the whole this year. And so we have surplus from the prior year to cover that, but my concern was, if this trend continues for 2022, is that 6.033% premium sufficient to cover those costs? And what is causing this? So some of this, you know, could be attributable to post-COVID, you know, a lot of things were postponed during COVID. So as things started opening up, people started having procedures that they did not have in 2020. But some of the experience, then, that doesn't necessarily make sense going forward. We knew we had a number of large claimants that were approaching or had reached our $75,000 stop-loss amount, and so went back and, you know, we looked at our aggregate limit, are we going to meet that? We looked at our stop-loss, should we change our stop-loss back to $50,000, and what would that cost be? I convened another meeting of the Insurance Committee on October 26, prior to our board meeting, discussed my concerns about the large September invoice and our low reserve level, and what action the committee should take to address this, and the committee did not want to take any action. So again, we did some further research and met, and talked with our broker, and they said that an additional 1% to 2% premium would be what would be recommended, because they predict that we will see many large claims again next year, based on the type of experience, what conditions that some of the plan participants have, and so they see that continuing into the next year. So again, I convened another meeting of the insurance company, or the Insurance Committee on November 10, with the broker present, and we discussed this with our Insurance Committee representatives. And again, what we've see, what we've been seeing, why we have concern, our premium increase for this current calendar year was a 4.9% increase. That clearly was not adequate to cover the experience that we have. And so my, again, is 6.033% adequate for next year? Blue Cross is not monitoring our reserves, we're self-insured. So we discussed whether there were some plan design changes that we should implement, do we look at changing deductible, out-of-pocket, should we be looking back at, looking at our formulary? What types of things could we do? Again, some of those things, based on the nature of claimants, is probably not the right time to make some of those changes. But again, we need to do something. And so we, one of the things we are doing is we're adding a hybrid PPO plan that has much lower costs than our current PPO plan. Our hope is that our employees will look at that plan as a way to save money, and it should, by utilizing that plan, they should, they should be able to save money, and the district should be able to save money. How much? I can't predict. But what I wanted to be, I would be remiss if I did not bring this, my concern, to the board, and, you know, there's several options that the board can take. In fact, in my action proposal, I've said, you can keep, you know, you can vote on the 6.033%, you can do a 7.033%, or an 8.033%, because that was in the, between the 1% and 2% additional increase. Best practice states that we should have two- to three-month reserve level. Our Insurance Committee has said, you know, recommended 1% to 2%, nothing is formal. We have about a 25% of a month in reserve right now. That's concerning. I'm risk averse. I think that we, I'm fiscally conservative when I'm looking at the district's money. We have a very rich benefit plan, and one of the things that I'm also looking, you know, I'm looking at the best interests of the district, but also of our employees. So when I look at a 6.033% increase, and I'm not sure that that's going to cover and recoup some of these negatives that we've had, I'm also looking at the employee. Is it better to have a little bit higher increase this year versus what could be a substantially large increase next year? So we did discuss, well, what happens if that 6.033% increase does not cover next year? And now we're really negative, we have to make that up. And so how do we do that? What mechanism? So, you know, there's a possibility 15% increases next year, 20% increases. I, I hope not, I hope that our experience changes, and that this truly is an anomaly year, but I can't be sure, I can't predict the future. So again, at some point, you know, you can, you can kick that can down the road, at some point, that road ends, and you have to make a tough decision. Do you turn left? Do you turn right? Do you go over the cliff? So I just want to make sure, I want to make sure that the board and our employees are fully aware of what the different actions, the consequence of the different actions that are taking place tonight. So just.
Kim, in your presentation with the levy, you spoke a little bit about that concern, and you said that we asked, where does, to pay the bill for, in response to not having enough in reserves, where does that money come from?
Well, right now, Fund 12, which is our insurance fund, is a sub-fund of our Education Fund. So again, we've never, in the, my entire career, I've never had this happen with a, with a self-insured fund. And so, again, working with our attorney about what the funding mechanism would be, the district is going to have to pay those bills, whether we have money in the insurance fund or not. So we'll definitely have to come from the Ed Fund, and whether the O and M Fund picks up part of that, because there's employees that are paid out of that, I don't know, I'll have to investigate that if we get to that point.
And if we use those funds that would start taking away possibly other projects, it would affect some, probably in the Education Fund, some lessons, correct?
Well, I mean, again, those are the difficult decisions that will have to be made in the future, because if you eat into your, you're eating into your reserves, into your fund balance. And so again, we have a 45% fund balance policy, we already know our Ed Fund doesn't meet that, some of our other funds do, and so the combination of our operating funds, we're okay, but that particular fund does not meet that criteria. So again, tough decisions have to be made. What are those decisions? Obviously, salaries and benefits are the largest portion of our district's expenditures. Do you have to make, you know, obviously, we're not getting buy-in on making changes to our benefits, so salaries, you know, there's only so many, our building budgets are not very large, and so there's only so many things you can do to reduce those. So really, it's, it goes into your staffing, into your salaries.
I have two quick questions. So currently, the expectation on the premium is the 6.03, is that right?
Correct, and so, and, and I understand where the members of the committee are coming from, hey, you presented, the broker presented 6.033%. Unfortunately, this is not a static world that we live in, everything is dynamic. And so, again, when we get new information that changes something, data that changes something, we look at it, we retool, we reanalyze, and that's what we do. We do that with our students. If we have some data on them, and then see that something has changed, we make adjustments as we go, we don't wait another year to make those adjustments.
Sure, that makes sense. But in your note, it said that the committee didn't come to agreement on where the percentage should fall, the 6.0.
Correct, they, they, they believe the 6.033.
Okay.
So they agreed on the 6.033?
They agreed on 6.003, but not on anything higher than that.
One union was not represented, one union had a conversation after, so, but yes.
And so agreeing on the 6.03, getting more information on October, unfortunately adjusting, feeling like we needed to adjust to an 8%,
Yeah.
Understanding that that might affect the premium increase for next year, is that correct?
Yes.
That we could see a larger, and our unions were willing to accept that risk, to, to stick with a 6% this year, risk that we'd see, you know, instead of a, instead of a 10% next year, we see a 12% or higher. The, the unions, the unions were willing to, to take that and understand that that would, that that might hit us next year.
Potentially, yes.
That's exactly what I'm understanding.
Yeah, potentially, yes.
They've heard, that the committee has heard that we're trying to avoid something for the future, that's a potential, and, and their response was, well, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Right, yeah.
And, and if that means higher increases sometime in 2022,
Yeah.
Then, then that is what they would like to see happen. That's what I'm understanding.
That's what it appears to be.
I think that that's what we have to go on.
I, I agree.
And the one other thing too, is, you know, the Insurance Committee has to agree on plan design and present those to the board, so that's in the contract language. What is not in the contract language is premium.
Got it.
Yes, I, I think that we need to, we need to be more aggressive next year with our, with our premium, very likely with our first number that we go out, because even though we do, we do adjust things for our students, and we adjust throughout the year, we get information, we only have an option to create a premium adjustment once a year, even with more information, and understanding that the option was out there to do an increased amount with more information, seeing as it, seeing as, how it might affect next year, and they opted not to do that, I do think we need to stick with the six. But I also think we all need to understand that the, the bills get paid, and it will come out of the funds that we have in our Education Fund, which is where the majority of our Education Fund is teacher salaries, and then O and M, operations and maintenance, which is custodial and.
Potentially, and I have to, again, never, never encounter this situation.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, but we need to, we as a board need to understand that those bills have to get paid, and that we may need to make other decisions as effects of those bills, and I think we have to accept that. The, the, the piece that the, that the Insurance Committee accepted was the risk that next year's premium increase is much higher.
Right.
And I think the piece that we as a board have to accept is the risk that we're going to have to make some decisions that we don't want to make to cover overages that, that, and that is our responsibility as a board to, to do. And it's not, we have to make great decisions, but we also have to make some real tough decisions too, so.
Yep, and so again, you know, hopefully, we'll be lucky, and the new plan participants will decide to go with the new hybrid PPO, and we will see some cost savings from that. The other thing that we're going to be doing is doing some investigating, we're going to start in January, looking at what are our options, maybe interviewing other brokers, and then determining if we would do an RFP, investigate joining an insurance cooperative, what would it look like for us to move from self-insured to fully insured? Really, I think there was maybe one other time in the history of this district that the self-insured plan was having some difficulty, but since I've been here, we've had a couple of, you know, double-digit increases, but we've even had a 1.5% decrease, and a couple of things, you know, a percent or lower. So it, you know, it's kind of all over the place, they say it goes kind of in four-year cycles. We've had a couple four-year cycles, but now this is, we're not in a four-year, it looks like it might be a little more frequent.
Let's get proactive, right? Let's get proactive next year.
And so the other thing, again, looking at, you know, what would it look like for, to be fully insured, okay? Again, coming off a high utilization year is not really the year you want to go to fully insured. So anyway, but I just, I wanted to make
Yep.
Everyone aware, and so that, and again, no surprises in when I come to you and say, oh, guess what, we had to pull money to fund to pay the bill.
Yep, absolutely, I think we're all clear, and I know you need a decision tonight.
Yeah.
So is everyone on the board in agreement with the 6.003, or 033?
033. We'll get to the action item.
Making sure everyone's okay with that, so when we move to the action item, we will present it in that fashion.
And real quick question, the hy, the hy, the hybrid PPO is a lower-cost plan, and is that designed to be something for like, is that designed to be like a family plan or a single plan, or is it kind of meant to be?
It's both, and what it's meant to do is, there's a tier one, and then a tier two, and the costs for tier one are significantly lower than tier two, and so hopefully your providers are in tier one, you drive your utilization to tier one, but you do have other options, and so if you want, and we'll use, for example, you need an MRI, your tier one provider, it costs $1,000, your tier two provider, let's say it costs $4,000. You have the choice to utilize either, but the cost to the district by utilizing tier one, and the cost to employ, the employee, are going to be significantly lower than utilizing a tier two. So if you want to use tier two, your, the person who's utilizing it is going to have more skin in the game.
So it creates additional choice, which is exactly what everybody would like, but also some individ, a lot of individual choice, and also some, some ability to decrease costs on themselves.
Yep.
Awesome, thank you for that.
All right, great. Okay, so let's move into our action items. The first action item is the approval of non-certified staff salary increases for the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the non-certified salary increases for the 2020, 2021 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. DeCade?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Action item number two, the approval of athletic training contract with DuPage Medical Group. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the athletic training contract with DuPage Medical Group LTD, duly health and care for November 17, 2021, through July 31, 2024 as presented, and allow Kimberly, Kimberly Anderson to execute the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. DeCade?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin? Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Number three, approval of authorize, authorization for treasurer to pay additional November 2021 bills. The chair will entertain a motion to authorize and direct the treasurer to pay bills received in November 2021 for the 2022 fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Number four, approval of the tentative 2021 tax levy. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the tentative 2021 tax levy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Number five, the change in Westmont High School graduation requirements. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the change in Westmont High School graduation requirements starting in the 2022, 2023 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Number seven is approval of the 2022, 2023 school calendar. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 school calendar as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Number seven is approval of the 2022, 2023 school calendar. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 school calendar as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Number eight is approval of renewal of medical insurance plan. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the renewal of the medical insurance plans at a 6.033% premium. Increase. Second. Premium increase, sorry, premium increase.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Number seven is approval of the 2022, 2023 school calendar. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 school calendar as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Number four, approval of the tentative 2021 tax levy. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the tentative 2021 tax levy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Number five, the change in Westmont High School graduation requirements. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the change in Westmont High School graduation requirements starting in the 2022, 2023 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Number seven is approval of the 2022, 2023 school calendar. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 school calendar as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Number eight is approval of renewal of medical insurance plan. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the renewal of the medical insurance plans at a 6.033% premium. Increase. Second. Premium increase, sorry, premium increase.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Okay, Kevin, your superintendent's report.
Very brief.
How, how brief?
Very brief. Just a reminder, just a reminder that the Frosty and Friends Parade is December 4th, and the school board will be walking in the parade. Parade starts at 5:00 PM. If you're planning on walking into the parade staging area, you start staging at 4:15 PM, and it's on Linden, right by Manning School. You are welcome to have your family members join you if you'd like. Then Angie, you're going to bring your-
I'm going to bring my little box, my toaster box.
You bring your vehicle, and we'll have the-
I was going to say, we are going to have a car, right?
Yes. Do we need, do we need candy?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
We'll, we'll distribute candy.
All right.
I'll bring some candy too.
Fantastic. Can we send out a survey asking everybody what they like the most?
No.
Come on!
I love it. That's my report.
Oh, well, there you go.
That was quick.
Um, all right, anybody have any board reports? No? Okay. Just kidding. Does anybody have any board reports, seriously?
No.
No. Kevin, I just had a question with the PR committee, like their signs, yard signs displaying uh-
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
The high school and achievements and displayed across our district.
It's in the process, yes. We're working on it.
Awesome. Also, it was really nice to get that agenda draft, by the way.
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Yay!
Yes, it was.
Winning.
It does get tweaked a little bit, you know?
But the general-
The draft agenda?
Fantastic. Um, okay, any public comments?
Okay. Elaine Magala? Hi, everyone, I know it's late. So after tonight's discussion, I am still struggling, so it's clear that the school board heard the presentation made by the admin tonight and made the decision already. And I just want to share how I'm struggling, because I think there may be others in the community that are struggling also. And so equity rating from the state is not demographics within the building, it's how